Twenty twenty five. That's the call for the virtual call.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yeah.
Councilmember Salazar.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Yeah.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. Item number three, study session. And that will be to receive a presentation on approved twenty twenty four general obligation bonds, which was measure Q. Turn it over to Mark C. L.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor of the Council. My name is Nick McGarrett. I'm the administrative services director, chief financial officer. And it's my pleasure this evening to provide an update to the city council on the recently voted approved measure Q, general obligation bonds. We'll through just a quick overview of the agenda. We'll focus quickly on the background, how we got to where we are this evening. Then we'll focus on the process for identifying bond funded projects, followed by the process or determining factors for for bond funded projects. And finally, next steps for city council action. This evening is simply to receive the presentation. We have no action recommended of the council this evening. So just to go into the background, I presented a similar slide to council in the past that marks the key dates relative to placing a bond measure on the on the November ballot. Only the only additions here are that the elections were certified by the council and the Secretary of State. The ballot question is our is our guiding document with respect to how the funds can be used. And I'll walk through that very quickly. As highlighted, the words are those that are most important as we talk about first and foremost. First, but not in any specific order. The bond monies can be used for repair, deteriorating storm trains. Repair loopholes or city streets, upgrade fire stations. And those three areas are those three areas of projects, the only projects for which one is used. And the voters authorized to or participated in one hundred two million dollars bonds at a tax rate of three cents per one hundred dollars assessed value. As a as good governance measure, the the measure also has clarification that the funds cannot be used for administrator salaries. Highlights that that as general obligation bonds, the monies are oval and controlled by the city council and cannot be taken by this by the state of California. And then finally, that they're on an annual basis, citizen oversight, which will review the independent audits of how measure Q funds are used. Just a quick highlight of the results as a general allocation bond. The threshold for passage for approval was sixty six point six seven percent. Of the seventeen thousand three hundred eighty votes cast, or twelve thousand seven hundred three, or about seventy three percent were in vain. I'm going to go into the process that can be used to determine which projects will be funded using measure Q monies. First and foremost is the voter approval, which was successful in November. We have we then go into project identification and scoping. This is an early step to for staff to identify those projects that are within those three categories identified earlier and heard by the voters, as well as an initial scoping. However, this does not imply that design or any additional work beyond sort of the various high level of review of the of the project and general considerations. Those then go to the city manager for for his review and consideration of a recommendation to city council through the council. So the council's capital program process. So as capital projects, the measure Q funded projects will be part of the annual CIP capital program budget process. Once the council has given their direction on those projects that like to move forward, the staff would then recommend adopting a reimbursement resolution, which marks the point after which the city council approval. The city may incur expenditures for projects funded by measure Q, and those expenditures would be reimbursed by measure Q bond proceeds when the bonds are issued. I'll go into a little bit why why the reimbursement resolution is important to these mayor's likes. Once we have the reimbursement resolution, we'll begin to spend money on planning and design of the council projects. This will vary based on the type and nature, based on the nature of the flex view projects. However, as the council made a call, there's there was identification that we would issue bonds in three tranches of approximately five years separating those tranches or series sale of bonds. And some projects, given their complexity, may take longer to design than others. However, the reimbursement resolution gives us the ability to recover by planning and designing those that are there. So we lead up to the bond issuance. So at the at an appropriate time when we know that we're getting very close to construction, we would look at issuing bonds. The bonds would be used to fund the construction. So we have three very critical touch points of community. Two very important touch points of community involved in this process. First, the voter approval, but then more importantly, the annual CIP process, which then gives us the authority to move forward with spending and ultimately construct the project. I'll now go into a bit of the factors that council and staff would consider as we plan and where to spend funds. The most important piece here is that we have to have the ability to spend bond proceeds, which is effectively the project timing and timeline. One of the obligations that I have and that the city has when we report on an annual basis the use of bond proceeds is that within three years of bond issuance, eighty five percent of the project or the project is at eighty five percent completion. There's a little bit of flexibility in there. It's not how it's however, it's not terribly flexible, and it's based on the best information that we have at the time. The other piece of project timing that is critical to evaluate is the existing staff capacity and the existing capital program that has already been adopted by the council. In 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 our current staffing plan, we have staffed to the current CIP or capital improvement program budget that that has been adopted by city council. And measure Q would be above and beyond that. So we would we need to figure out how to manage our resources to deliver the measure Q projects, which have a definitive timeline on when they need to complete. Another determining factor is change in assessed values or ability to borrow money. It's modeled based on a financial model provided to us by experts in this area. The assumption is that our assessed value will grow approximately four percent per year, which is consistent with past growth. However, if assessed value does not grow at that rate, that can determine that can impact our ability to borrow the size of the amount of money. And then finally, market conditions. There's great certainty about where the next sort of six months or next year, how that might affect the bond market. And we just don't know until we get closer to bond issuance. So what the market conditions, which would dictate the interest rates that we would pay, how favorable are how attractive our bonds are in the marketplace, which again affects rates. And so, you know, at this point, we can't make any predictions on this particular point, but it will be particularly important when we get closer to the issuance. So as I mentioned, staff capacity, currently we have authorized full time equivalent personnel. Typically, these large complex projects are managed by our engineer staff, specifically engineers. And we currently have a vacancy rate in that staff of twenty six percent. We have eleven authorized FTEs and four who are vacant. Additionally, the city does not currently have a formal way without having your staff, project managers beyond engineers. Another factor impacting staff capacity, as I mentioned earlier, is the existing capital program budget. The first two buckets I would highlight are streets and stormwater. Both of these are capital areas that are eligible for use or to for which measure Q funds can be applied. However, there are already funding sources for these projects, and a decision may need to be made relative to prioritization for where we spend funds in those areas. On top of streets and stormwater, we also have water and wastewater, which are significantly larger than the other two categories, and those have no relationship to measure Q. We cannot use measure Q funds in those areas. However, we do have funding for those capital program. So just to quickly graph where we are with respect to assessed value. The model that the the blue line, as you see there, is sort of is represents two percent annual property tax assessed value growth. This is a maximum allowed by Proposition two thirteen, I'm sorry, Proposition thirteen, which sets a cap that's on assessed value growth and subsequently the taxes that the property taxes that are paid by by property owners. The model assumes a one percent increase, which is the original length. So you'll see that they diverge rather quickly as we get particularly out in the out years. Whether the actual assessed value growth is above, below, or in between those two lines will will impact our ability to the amount of funds that we can accrue. Right now, we're looking at three tranches, as we discussed with the city council. The first would be in twenty six, twenty seven of thirty four million dollars. From that point to bond issuance, we have we would have three years to complete construction, eighty five percent construction. The next tranche, second tranche is in twenty thirty one, thirty two. And then the final is at twenty thirty six, thirty seven. Each thirty equal thirty four million. This maximizes our bond capacity that is approved by voters at three dollars, at three cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Again, there are other factors that may drive whether or not these are the amounts that we can borrow. But basically modeling that has been presented, this is for currently. So just to wrap it all up, the next steps. We will be seeking city council action and direction in in two areas. The first is our goal setting, the council's goal setting session on the twenty fourth, which is next Friday. At that point, city council will consider a recommendation from staff of whether measure Q is a priority area for the council in twenty five, twenty six. With that priority, it helps us develop the identifying scope of projects that then we can move into the CIP study session, which will come on March eleventh. And then happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the information to have to report. Again, we do have a goal setting, as was indicated by the CFO on January the twenty fourth. But so colleagues, if you have any questions about us. Let's move in. Happy New Year. That's it?
Yeah, yeah.
Call, tell the record.
Comment. Have one speaker card, Melissa.
June. Mayor Medina and city council members, good evening. My name is Melissa Nandoni Jones. I'm the president of the San Bruno Community Foundation. As you know, over the past decade, the foundation has been thrilled to partner with the city on a long list of meaningful projects benefiting our community from downtown improvements to parks and fields, and most notably, the brand new San Bruno Recreation Aquatic Center. As you know, foundation board committed fifty one point five million dollars of the original seventy million in restitution funds received from the PG&E settlement for the design and construction of the rack and another two point two five million for startup programming and outreach activities to help ensure a financially viable business plan going forward. We beam with pride as the doors of the state of the art rack opened this past summer, and we are seeing the tangible, significant, and long term benefits that the rack will have for the San Bruno community for decades to come. Now, the board is engaging in a strategic planning process to chart out the foundation's post-rack strategy, starting in the twenty twenty five, twenty six fiscal year. We are currently looking at two main options. One option we are considering is spending down the remaining assets over a fifteen to twenty five year timeframe, which would allow us to continue the Crestmore Scholarship Community Grant Program and make some additional but relatively modest strategic grants on an annual basis. The other main option is to spend down the bulk of the remaining assets of another significant legacy project. In other words, invest in another rack-like project. What is appealing about this option is that it enables us to use the remaining restitution funds on another very significant and lasting project, one that would not be possible without these funds. We think this could be the most meaningful use of the remaining restitution funds and the best way to honor the Crestmore neighborhood. Based on our current assets and liabilities, and assuming that the market stays relatively stable, we expect at the end of the current fiscal year to have about seventeen to nineteen million dollars to dedicate to another major project. We know that's probably not enough to fully fund another community facility, but we do think it could make a meaningful difference in the city being able to accomplish such a project. As the city council explores and uses the measure Q funds and thinks about future community facilities, we at the foundation are interested in engaging with the council about possible projects that could make sense for both the city and the foundation to invest in. For example, an investment of the remaining restitution funds in a new fire station could be the ideal final project for the foundation, given that the funds resulted from the devastating gas pipeline explosion and fire in the Crestmore neighborhood. Perhaps the city is considering a new library or community center. There are possible ideas that we would like to explore with the city council as we move forward in our strategic planning process this spring. There is some urgency to the deliberations. To the extent that it could continue to follow down our current path or to adopt the first option I mentioned earlier, we would continue to spend down the remaining assets, which will leave less funds available for another legacy project at a future date. Although we know the city may not be ready to commit to another major project in the next few months, we want to begin the conversation with you to see if there's a possibility of another mutually appealing project for both the foundation and the city to pursue, which will enable us to make some decisions at the foundation post-rack. We ask for your guidance in having these conversations, and we look forward to engaging with you for continued benefit of the San Bruno community. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Any other speakers?
No, no other speakers.
We can give the same time. Okay, now I'll bring it back to the council.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff, for for the key thing here is orders, I'll say this, seventy three percent. That I view that as we need to take care of business and continue fixing our city. So most of those comments, it's seems like it'd be very fitting to hold circle. Finders community problem and devastation to them there. Having the new fire station is part of it. Be very interesting. So I just wanted to take note. Owners, third trust, and so this council could use to make sure that we have the staff to do some sizable work. Make sure it's very clear. So good to hear.
In terms of the citizen oversight, so I'm assuming we're going to comply the oversight of the same company that sees our our special source. And I think that would be beneficial just in terms of scheduling both staff time and and ladies' time. We had less, so it was
we are, we will be looking into that. The measure Q oversight committee would apply once we once we get closer to the actual expenditure of funds. And so we will return to bill the follow up council. I think would be if it's your point, I have a member would be efficient to save money.
And and it sounded like the allocation or the yeah, the allocation of the fund would happen sooner rather than later because it's going to be part of our CIP process, I'm assuming. I think this year that we can start deciding where we want to make investments.
Yeah, so the the I apologize, I don't have any, I don't have any information to talk about. I have to get back to the council. We'll do that next week.
Then again, this is just to give us a high level overview, understanding of process for going forward. Again, like it's asked, the city will set me up for the next Friday, and that's when you're asking some more details and information to be settled out.
So specific to goal setting here, as council may recall, there are a number of agenda items. The first is a discussion of the CIP overall. However, with respect to the project scoping and the spending and the city manager's recommendation, those would ideally come to city council on the eleventh. Just part of the CIP study session.
Anything else? Any comments, your questions? Okay, then if not, thank everyone. Thank you, Mayor. And we're going to go ahead and then adjourn this special meeting of the city council to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held this evening at seven P M. right here. The special meeting is adjourned.
City Council Regular Meeting, January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Meeting is called Order, Roll Call Days.
Councilmember Alvarez, yeah. Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. Uh, could I please ask those that are able to rise and join me much?
Would you? What's the right? Even I have states to bear to the Republic, which say this one nation. Into this whole, for deep disaster.
Thank you. Item number four, public comment for items not on the agenda.
I have one speaker card for Chris.
Good evening. Also concerned about the diamond three being addressed to the city. Uh, five, six months ago, and there's no lighting back there at all. And people are worried about the safe, unsafe, like situation back there, slips, falls. People do walk a lot back there and it's pitch black, no lighting at all. And then parking lot next to the church, the lighting was addressed. They said they're working on it and still pretty bad over there because we have like two times, three times more than people walk into now less parking. And hopefully it does get addressed. And we move forward because if you do leave tonight, look back there, it's pitch black, unsafe. And hopefully we can rectify and move forward. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and thank you for being here. The next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Rebecca Hala.
Hi, good evening, city staff and city council. I'm here on behalf of the San Bruno Merchants Association. Um, in regards to the downtown and what's happening or what's not happening. Um, I remember you guys hear from me regularly, but we really need your help. Alex, city manager, Rico, ma'am, please, we really need your help downtown. I'm here because the people that work in downtown are still to their jobs right now. Our downtown is not like the other downtowns of the peninsula. We're very small businesses, we're not corporate shops. And if you walk into any of our stores downtown, you'll most likely see the owners every time you walk in because we have to work our businesses. And what is falling on deaf ears is that our downtown is suffering. The community is suffering, the residents in the neighboring community are suffering. Everybody in the area is suffering and nothing is being done. So I've been coming to these meetings for a year and a half. I anticipated these problems were going to happen. For some reason, San Bruno likes to be reactive instead of proactive. But I urge you to make a change and to do something different. We're starting a new year, it's twenty twenty five. We have new businesses coming into town. Unfortunately, we have new, new businesses already closing. I don't know if you know, but Cafe Kitchen Therapy, which opened in the little plaza of Camino has only been open for six months and is already closing their doors. There are businesses that will be shuttering, there are employees that are losing their jobs. Mukesh from Neela Market, a, a business that's been a staple in our community for over thirty five years, had to let go of three different employees because the business has slowed down so much in our downtown community. Our businesses are suffering and it's very difficult to understand why this council doesn't care about the businesses in San Bruno. It is insane to feel like you don't care. We're humans, we come here and we begging for your support, we begging for your help. Nobody is arguing for the kiosks to leave for no paid parking. We just ask that it be fixed. There were six directives given in November. I only saw one item on the agenda tonight. It's been almost a year of this suffering. The other day I saw Marty across the street and I was stopping with a customer because the guy had literally come out of his car. Somebody was introducing me to this musician and we're having a conversation. And four last people give them the ticket in the one minute that he walked out of his car and said hello to a community member. We had to then stop, ask the, the person to please reverse the ticket. This is what happens all day long. Even the pro meter people are, are mitigating this kind of issue all the time. Nobody is saying take them away, we just want them fixed, please help us.
Do you even speak under your phone? I, I think so. I'm, I'm not sure if you can speak.
Uh, public comments for items not on the agenda has, it kind of went a little bit to the, the topic, but um, did you want to wait until we get to the other agenda items on downtown and meters?
Whatever you would like, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You know where I'm coming from.
Okay, we'll, we'll wait till that. Thank you. Um, any other public comments?
No, the speaker Chris.
Thank you. Um, next announcements and presentations. I do want to acknowledge that as we all watch the news on what's happening uh, in LA and we obviously suffered up here, but we're probably even want to be told probably about over forty thousand acres uh, collectively in some of the communities that have been hit. So, uh, one offer that our prayers and thoughts flash to neighbors in Southern California, LA counties, and the communities that the people who are affected by these fires are suffering. And our hearts do go out to them. I want to share with the community that our, our fire department has an engine staff with four firefighters, one battalion chief and one EMT, who are currently signed uh, down to help out and probably have close to a two weeks then that they will be there. Uh, this is a significant commitment to our neighbors, which we all do in these times of need. Uh, I just want you to know that I've spoken to the fire chief, we are fully staffed. This is not affecting any of our response time or uh, assisting this community in any calls that may come into the day-to-day operation and mission. Uh, many may be concerned after seeing the events unfold in Southern California concern, which is understandable, of course, I remember going to paradise after that fire. Um, it was devastating, brings back memories. I wanted to just let the community know that the, the department has conducted a study in two nineteen to understand the wildfire threats in San Bruno, negotiated a settlement, contributed to flat fire mitigation in the Crestmore Canyon. Uh, CIP dedicated a hundred fifty thousand dollars annually to also toward mitigation. The perimeter of Crestmore Canyon is cleared a hundred foot from structures, cleared all the fire roads in Crestmore Canyon to ensure fire department access. Citywide Fire Mitigation CIP. Uh, there has been clear evacuation routes on Crystal Springs Road between City Parkway and Crestmore Drive, including large human logistics trees. Crestmore Drive between Piedmont and Vennington, Buckeye Park, Livingston Terrace, Sneed at the entrance to Sweeney Ridge. We continue on with the measured K funds that we have gotten for the shipping program. Uh, in addition, we have other apparatuses, we've added an inspector. Uh, we have a Cal OES type uh, five engine assigned to fire station fifty two. And I could go on, but I just want to assure the community that have made progress for fire mitigations that have not been happened uh, in this community. But also we just want to have our thoughts and prayers with those folks in Southern California who are suffering currently. And wish the best to all of those public safety personnel who are doing their best. So now we'll move on to the announcements. Do you know a person or group who has provided special or extraordinary service in San Bruno community? Nominate them for a service award. The city of San Bruno is accepting service nomination applications through February nineteenth. Applications will be considered on February sixth or seventh. For information and an application, go to sanbruno.ca dot S R P. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing January as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And I'll just read some of the wherethis. Whereas the United States Senate designated January eleventh as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day in oh seven. And beginning in two thousand and ten, my president, presidential proclamation each And beginning in two thousand ten, my president, uh presidential proclamation each January has been designated. National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And whereas the county of San Mateo has designated resources, including the San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program. And has supported the efforts of the San Mateo County Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association. And has partnered with other governmental and non-governmental organizations to identify and address human trafficking within San Mateo County. Now therefore I recall Medina Mayor of the City of San Bruno to hereby proclaim the month of January twenty twenty-five as Human Trafficking Prevention Awareness Month. Moving on to item C, um, the city manager and I put this on the agenda. We have uh. For tonight's meeting, we have two department heads, two executive team members that will be having their last meeting with us. We have. One is our Community Services Director, Travis, who I think we said has been here about fifteen months. Uh, and where you may say in a short time, um, I can say that uh you haven't accomplished a lot. We're sitting in this room here. This morning, we're out there. The Centennial Plaza groundbreaking and ribbon cutting, the Recreation Aquatic Center, as I mentioned. From my understanding, you're uh responsive, easy to work with, good natured, good attitude, even when things may become stressful. Your energy visionary, new thoughts and experiences that you have, which you have brought to us. Has been a positive and rewarding to the San Bruno community and the development department. With anyone who must do what is best for them and their others in their lives. I consider us fortunate to have had you on the executive team and helping us navigate through many projects and bringing some of them to completion. Your personality and able to get along with others is admirable. I recall the time early on with you when you were here and we were talking and you said, you know, at times. I like to have some fun, like to be a little sarcastic at times. And I said, well, that'll work out just perfect, so who do I? And uh, I just want to thank you very much. For what you have done for this community and I in the council wish you the very best and as you embark upon another chapter. Travis, do you like to say anything?
Seeing it's an honor and a privilege to be here even for a short time. Uh, I want to thank the city manager, Alex McIntyre, for giving me a shot here and taking me on as a member of the executive team. Uh, I felt tremendous support from this council and I felt tremendous support from the executive team and from the community. Um, I made many good friends when I was downtown with some business owners. And um culturally miss this team and I will be sure to stop it because I will be back and forth a little bit. Um, and I'll, I'll certainly stop in and see how things are going along with. Thank you. Thank you very much. And again, we appreciate it.
Police Chief Ryan. I've known you from when you were an officer who lived in San Bruno to becoming the chief, but now with the, the longer commute. Through the years, we have had an honest, respectful relationship that has been one thing in my mind. What is and with yours, what is best for the city of San Bruno and the San Bruno Police Department. You have developed and implemented in the department changes which have added to morale. And of course, a new program and concern for wellness. We have a department that we are not offering signing purposes for the highest pay, but do not have a challenge. As other agencies do to be fully staffed or the desire of others wanting to lateral here in San Bruno. You've been a chief that has outreach to the community, been available for meetings. And always there when asked to participate and represent the department and the city. You've dealt with the George Floyd killing, which had a change and changed the department. You were one who looked and dealt with it in the most respectful way. And even with the defunding of the police that was cried out. I remember when we had a gathering over in City Park. And you and I were there and you kept the respect and allowed that activity to occur and it was peaceful. You and I took a knee as throughout the program and process. I will say that I didn't need to switch knees, I'll be older, but uh I would say I had a harder time getting up. But I will tell you that. You brought respect and calm to the community at some uncertain times. There is no secret that I look at support and believe in the need for a strong, well-trained public safety team. Since I have seen and know firsthand what it means when the call goes out and the force. Goes into action without hesitation and to protect this community. You, sir, have brought me comfort on the protection of San Bruno, the service they provide. And the care they have all do and care for this community and the city of San Bruno. It is my privilege to have had you as our chief and as the elected mayor have been honored, the relationship we have had. Which I can't believe most mayors and chiefs have, had, but it made a great partnership to support and provide. To the San Bruno and its residents. My friend, I wish you and your family the best in your travels. Future and in your new home and position. And I would acknowledge that we have a couple officers here. And our former police chief, Ed Barberini, now chief of the city of San Mateo. So Ryan. Behalf of the city council, thank you. If you'd like to say anything.
Mayor, members of council, we're taking a few moments for this. This is bittersweet and actually quite difficult for me. Um, I am forever indebted to this community and to the opportunities it has provided me over the last twenty years. This has been absolutely the greatest honor of my professional adult life that someone has spent in the city and the grace that I've been shown. I just wanted a couple minutes to thanks of people because it's very important to do so. First and foremost, it's the brave men of the San Bruno Police. The work that these people do every day is extraordinary and most of it is unseen and we want it. But the reality is the only reason we have the luxury to talk about things like parking complaints and issues downtowns. Because of the work that they're doing every single day to keep the bigger problems out of this community and they are ever present and the threat they deal with the concept. They do so with minimal staffing. They do so with minimal resources. They do so without any request for me, so grace. I am forever in their debt for the honor they've shown me and allowing me to be as a chief, but they are the ones doing the work every day. Second, I want to thank the community. This community has been good to me from the day I walked in two thousand and six. We have faced some difficult times together between the pipeline explosion, active shivers and the back of shivers in their ten grand mall. And the community, every single time, including during the difficulties of the George Floyd killing, has stepped up to say, our department is different and we support. And that has made it much easier to lead in this community than I could have ever imagined. I am forever in their debt as well. I also want to thank you, members of council, all of whom have been here for the bulk of my tenure as chief. You've shown me a tremendous amount of grace and leeway. I have attempted to do a number of things here that are moving stocks, to say the least, and I've received nothing but your support in doing so. I'd like to think that those have mostly bore out excellent results. You're kind of showing that there's a new path and a different way to lead a police department. None of that could have been done without your support and I really appreciate that. I also want to thank the executive team who has constantly supported me throughout periods that again, have not been the easiest to support the police. But when they're going through difficulties, they were my sounding board, my venting group, and have always been supportive of their when you tried to do as a police department. I also, as you mentioned, Chief Barberini is here. I want to take moment to thank him because without his mentorship and leadership, there is absolutely no chance I would have ever ended up in this position in the first place. Ed Barberini came in time where this police department was in dire need of leadership, provided that leadership got us hold. And was selfless in creating a succession plan that included me, for which I am forever in his debt as well. So again, I thank you very much for giving me a few moments. This has again truly been the greatest honor of my adult life serving here in San Bruno. And I will miss this community and all of you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. But now speaker cards will go to item six consent counter. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action. They may be enacted by law pressure. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one simple public comment period for all items in this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for a second. Are there any items for consent for a second? Seeing hearing none, are there any items for comment or wish? Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, right and I. And who knows?
Okay, let's go to I, the just the caveat of we get into the development area, we're gonna have to look on. Um. I consider adoption of a resolution accepting and appropriating grant funding and approving. Funding agreements with the city of San Bruno Community Foundation, getting that Patrick C three point four million for Crestmore Fields project.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, felt the need to uh. Express thanks to December Community Foundation for a tremendous project that this community is grounded around. Raising the soccer field, um, so many of our children, my son, um. Played there and to see it evolve into something different. And to know that December, San Bruno Community Foundation is willing to ride a significant amount of funding for. Uh, our children in the future. I wanted to make sure that it helps that. Looking forward to uh the next step.
Right, Mr. Mayor, in, uh, council member Hamilton.
Uh, I'd like to, I don't get to talk about Crestmore very often, so um I, I wanted to uh. So I call my thanks to the Community Foundation for their generous grant um for the Crestmore Fields. Um, this particular project is phase one and uh there is still waiting for phase two. I did ask, um, I did ask staff to, if, if we have a. Repentive number for what the, what the phase two improvements, including all the light and all that is gonna cost. And that was, that is, that is being, still being uh determined. We know, we know a range is between uh. Three point four and five point one million to completely finish the project and um I'm hopeful to. Get that plan uh put together so we have, we have a good number of us to have, uh, a member of a shelter ready project in order to receive funding. Because uh we will, I'll try to seek to develop various funding, that's phase two project, super happy, fix one. Thank you.
And then just as a record, uh, council member Hamilton has refused, uh, been refused, but in this case, legal counsel has uh made it clear that yes. Uh, to the grant that it is perfectly good for him to vote on this item. So are there any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Okay, in action from council on consent.
Same.
Motion, Salazar, second Alvarez to approve all of consent. All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously by both. Actual movement on to public hearings.
Item A, consider introducing reading by title only and awaiting a further reading of the ordinance entitled. An ordinance of the city council of the city of San Bruno amending Title eleven. Buildings, construction and fire protection of the municipal code to strike all electric. Requirements in section eleven point zero six point zero three zero and article three zoning of Title twelve land use. Of the municipal code to implement programs ten B and eleven A of the twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. Housing element and franking the amendments exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Being a development director.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, uh, I am pleased to be presenting this item at this time, uh, as was. Uh, announced this is an ordinance to amend our municipal code uh to address a handful of either. Court cases or state law changes. The agenda for what we're gonna go through, uh, we're gonna go through the objective of, of the background is briefly touched on the proposed amendments. The planning commission's review of these amendments and, and with a recommendation. Effective of this meeting would be if uh for council to introduce an ordinance to amend the municipal code uh. To once again address the case law uh and also for housing element implementation. Background, uh, the, the case law is about. A case where the California Restaurant Association sued the city of Berkeley over their all-electric building codes. Uh, this was. Electric building code is also uh referred to as a ban on, on the use of natural gas. Uh, the Restaurant Association challenged that and uh the court cited on behalf of Restaurant Association and so. City of Berkeley had to stop implementing their natural gas ban or their all-electric ordinance. Uh, and the city of San Bruno also passed an all-electric uh ordinance and since that court case, we have not enforced it. Uh, but this ordinance would uh. Officially strike that requirement out of the code and make our, that code section be consistent with case law. The second part of these amendments are about the housing elements. Uh, there's two parts to that. One is uh implementing a program that allows a project with affordable housing is to, to, to defer their impact fees. Uh, instead of having to pay them when the permit is issued, they'd be allowed to pay the impact fees uh at occupancy. Uh, and program A is to update the code to comply with uh. Uh, numerous state laws that have been adopted about, about housing, um, housing development and laws over the past years. So this is a, a table of the chapters of the code that are invented. Uh, the first row is the energy code and that has, has to do with the case law. Uh, the rest of them are in zoning code, uh, and although one of them are uh. Uh, implementing housing element program eleven A. With the second to last one implementing housing elements ten B. Uh, all of these changes are specifically changes in wording to make our zoning, our, our municipal code comply with state law. Plan Commission has, uh, has the responsibility and authority to, to review all changes to Title twelve. Uh, make a recommendation to the city council on October fifteenth. Last year, uh, the plan commission unanimously recommended the amendments that uh address program eleven A. Uh, and then uh in December of last year, the plan commission unanimously recommended the amendments. Addressing the program ten B. Uh, plan commission did not review the amendment to Title eleven about the electric code. Uh, because that title is not uh in their purview. Uh, since the planning commission meeting, uh, there have been minor tax changes uh made. In conjunction with the city attorney's office to improve the clarity and conformance with state law. Uh, but the city attorney's office has determined none of these changes are, are making a meaningful change. Uh, to the regulations themselves. They only add clarity and so item does not have to go back to the planning commission. Uh, the project, uh, it offered these ordinances would not have a fiscal impact. Uh, as we are not enforcing, we are enforcing the state regulations already. Uh, and there was, would also not be environmental impact, uh, as none of these regulations involve. Increasing what can be, uh, or can be built. Uh, most of them are poor, minor in nature. So that staff recommendation is that you take public comments, uh, then staffs to answer any questions or comments from the council. Uh, the recommended action is uh to introduce the ordinance as read by the city clerk. And uh, that concludes my presentation and we'll be able to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so are there any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay, why don't we bring it back to uh council for any questions, comments?
And so, uh, no questions. It was very, very clear and we appreciate the, the clarity in the, in the staff report. Um, obviously we don't want to um strike the all-electric um requirement from our municipal code.
Um, obviously, we don't want to um strike the all electric um requirement from our municipal code. If we did, we probably wouldn't have said in the first place. Uh, but and I've gotten a lot of questions about this since the agenda went out and the what my responsibility to people is, we have we ask you what because of what we have in the code is not is not legally enforceable. But the good news is that builders build what their customers want. And the trend is toward all electric. Um, there is a large development going up in Crestmore. It's going to be two hundred fifty five homes. That's all electric. Um, they were not required to do that because this this part part of the initial code is not forcible. They did it anyway because that's what their customers want. So um, that's that's the good news in all of this and I just wanted to um uh.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, my colleagues? Uh, this will be the last call for anybody from the public before we close the public here. Seeing none, do you have an action to close public hearing, please? Who closed public hearing? Second, motion Hamilton, second Salazar to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously five oh. Now bring it back to uh colleagues for any consideration and reaction. Motion Hamilton, seconded by Salazar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously five. I have one item. Eight, time in the business.
Receive report and confirm appointment of city council members to serve as representatives and alternates to seven tail county agencies and other regional bodies.
Thank you. So that was in your packet. Um, I appreciate it. I tried to update descriptions. So it's accurate uh as far as for us when we're having to go to our meetings and stuff. As far as the regional assignments, I would say ninety nine percent of uh remain the same. There was just one change as an alternate. Uh, what I try to do is for folks that are in positions like a vice chair or on an executive board to remain them. So there's continuity and consistency, even though there was some ask to to make some changes, but I think that's important to have that. Uh, I do just say that uh uh, we had a selection committee yesterday at two o'clock uh for council of cities. And so there are boards that are still available. I mean, now let's go around with coming back again. So I just encourage my colleagues, if you have the time and availability, it is good to be at the table. Uh, and there are new council members from Millbrae, Pacifica, uh, Bosher City and others that are already, they've been in office on and they're already uh signing up and trying to uh serve on those regional bodies. So unless there's any questions, um, it's before you is on on the screen. Is there any questions or comments?
Sure, yes. I just wanted to um a little bit about this is something that I've expressed to the city manager that it may be more appropriate for somebody from staff, right, towards director to seeing that the table is is war of operations. And the majority of the is out there. And see that uh having director or engineer or supervisor that make things big flow. So I just wanted to uh bring that to your attention because responsibility to hide their server is possibly being for time to year. And the majority of the time that I'm there, uh, there's very need to do that. It doesn't involve us, so just I'm not continuing serving, but in the event that it wind up transferred to staff, I think that'd be refused.
So I know in the past, uh, former city manager uh did serve on it and then we take the council and drop it to land in December for Colma uh from town of Colma, city of Pacifica, city of Daly City, city of South San Francisco, city of San Bruno, all have electeds that serve currently in the capacity. I do think there's some technical elements that come up on those meetings that might be of value for the director city manager to have it reviewed just because it's technical for you. I mean, I know you know stuff, but I'm just saying, but it's it is sometimes confusing uh on those technical elements. So I'd like to have that continuing because we have electeds and if if the public works person or whomever, uh, it is important for that. Particularly, uh, that would be excellent as well.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments? Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Okay, any action from colleagues on uh confirming the appointments? Motion Hamilton, seconded, uh, Horney Medina, to go to Stevens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, passes unanimously five oh. Item B.
Item B, receive paid parking program update and consider adoption of a resolution amending recognized holidays for paid parking on city owned or controlled on and off street parking facilities and determining the project is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Chief Johansson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you very much. I'm Ryan Johansson, your chief of least uh at least for another week and a half or so. And I'm here this evening to present you with another update on the paid parking program. And uh, there's actually action I would want here as well. Uh, the agenda is we'll go through a brief objectives, some background, um, that will not be as lengthy as last presentation I promised. Uh, some discussion of the items from the meeting on November twelve. A recommendation from staff and of course time to take questions as needed. The objective this evening is simply to receive an update from the items that were discussed at the six month update of the paid parking program at the November twelve twenty twenty four meeting. Sorry about the date missed there. And to consider adopting a resolution amending uh recognized holidays for paid parking on city owned or controlled on and off street parking facilities and determining that that project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality. Brief background here, council received a six month update on the paid parking program at the eleven twelve twenty four special meeting. Uh, at that meeting, staff presented a number of items for council input and feedback as to potential amendments to the structure of the existing program. In addition, council articulated some additional items um for potential exploration by staff. Uh, staff took some time between then and now to clarify understanding of these items via the council digest of two different occasions. Uh, and this report is simply designed to provide some updated information on both those sets of items as to where we're at today. I will say that uh as I dig in, it's somewhat you'll see an overarching theme here. I'll talk about it at the end. But there are a number of items that there have been a varied degree of interest from council to have staff pursue in terms of amendments to the current restructure program. Uh, one of the overarching themes that you will pick up on this evening is that, as mentioned in the previous meeting, there is no staff resource to do this work. Uh, even as we've discussed moving the responsibility for the program, the responsibilities for the program that are not enforcement related outside of the P D. A resource does not exist outside of the P D either to do this work. So while there may be some frustration this evening, there cannot, there has not been as much movement as some council members may expect in some of these items. Please know that it is a direct result of the fact that there is no staff to complete the staff work that is desired to be done. Additionally, it is very important, I think, to remind us all of the eighty five percent background sort of goal here. This is the ideal peak occupancy rate for businesses and customers alike, not according to user police chief, but according to best practices, the countless available pieces of literature and research on programs like this. Uh, it ensures available parking for a variety of needs and this was identified and has repeatedly been identified as what should be the primary driver of your policy decisions around this program. Hard stop. Eighty five percent will not necessarily what every member of the community is gonna want to see is the goal of the program and should be paramount in evaluating whether or not the program is delivering upon its intention. Moving into discussion, these are the different items that were brought up at the meeting on the twelfth, so we'll go through them briefly, but one at a time. Um. One of them is the addition of shorter paid parking intervals in the lots. If you recall, we have already created a shorter interval on the streets at the twenty minute uh option. We discussed at the last meeting that the extremely low rates that we initially set in the parking lots, which is a dollar for two hours, makes it very cost prohibitive to create a shorter term solution. This is especially true and exacerbated when we have transactions involving credit cards and or the app. You pay transaction fees that can be well in excess of, let's say, a fifteen minute period would be if we base it upon the current rate structure in the lots. Um, this is what was reported on the twelfth and something that continues to be a potential issue with this ask. Uh, staff is evaluating the potential for a cash only option for a shorter term interval lots. This would likely need to be restricted to designated spaces, probably similar to what we currently know as green zones. And it would almost certainly require the purchase of individual meters for each of those spaces that can process coin transactions only. Initially, what we've discovered is that those old analog parking meters that we all know from back in the day don't really exist anymore unless you buy them at an auction as an antique item on eBay. So we're gonna basically most likely have to pay for a kiosk or a meter that can do a lot more than accept coins and then restrict it only accept coins if this is something we wanna do. There's obviously a lot to unpack there. My hope is that you understand that this is something that staff heard from you, you want us to consider, but there's significant additional work that needs to be done. Not only to determine its potential viability, but for finance to have the opportunity to look at the fiscal impacts to the parking program we're doing. So the plan is for staff to bring this back to council following solution identification, meaning finding whether or not individual meters are necessary and what the cost of those would be and a fiscal analysis of that cost and impacts of program as a whole. Another ask was for additional recognized holidays for exemption from paid parking. As I reported on the twelfth, very simply here, this is just a staff error in the resolution you adopted. Meaning that we identified only three holidays that would be exempt, or being three holidays where people could have to pay to park in the the zones that are designated for paid parking. In actual practice, from the very beginning, we have exempted all of the list of city holidays, never charged on any of the holidays that are designated as city holidays. Uh, but tonight in front of you will be a resolution for potential adoption and we'll rectify this disconnect between the resolution and the actual practice. Give you the opportunity to adopt all holidays as being free. Uh, next was exempting or reducing paid parking hours on Sundays. This is something in particular that's been talked about in my view as making most of these presentations ad nauseam. Uh, the fact is that if we're using the eighty five percent as a guiding principle, doing this is one hundred percent not supported by David. Sundays currently sit as the second most impacted day for parking in terms of the parking occupancy data downtown. If the goal of this program is to mitigate the problems associated with parking impacted parking, it absolutely makes the most sense to continue charging for parking on Sundays. Uh, if we choose through council direction to make this sort of a change, it will be costly to implement. We'll have to change all of the signage downtown. We'll all have to be reprinted to change the days of enforcement. We'll have to change the ordinance. We'll have to reprogram all kiosks. There will be a great deal of staff time involved and there will be a fiscal impact to no longer charging on Sundays. All of which should be included in a competent analysis you should ever look at before making such a policy decision. We've talked about it before at the twelfth meeting. By our assertions, only two of five council members supported further exploration of not charging on Sundays and so staff does not recommend any changes to this policy at this time. Next is allowing customers to pay to park in any lot and then move about the other lots. Uh, so that if you're shopping in multiple locations, you could pay, say to be in lot one and you could move to lot two, lot three, lot five, not have to pay again, as long as it fell within the time you've already paid for. You paid for two hours. Um, as reported on the twelfth, this is not supported by what is referred to as the park and walk principle, which is several of the adopted uh reports you're adopting to council as to what needs to be done downtown based on what the council said twelve several problems. Uh, additionally, it was only supported this from one or five council members on the twelfth. And so here as well, staff is not recommending any changes to this stuff. There was discussion of removing the paid parking requirement from all of El Camino Real. Parking demand in this area, as I described on the twelfth, is notably lower than parking demand in the rest of the paid parking zone. Uh, in fact, we're not reaching the eighty five percent occupancy at almost any point in time for our El Camino Real. So there could be some native support, reduce costs, or even eventually the elimination of paid parking in El Camino Real. But staff's initial looking into this believes that it is too early to analyze exactly what decision would be best here, especially with the new developments on El Camino. The suggestion would be to allow more time for those developments to come in to see how that changes the parking dynamic over the next several months or even couple of years and determine whether or not it makes sense to continue having paid parking in El Camino Real. Also important to understand that obviously, even though the demand is lower in El Camino Real, eliminating paid parking on El Camino would obviously have a fiscal impact to the viability of the program that we need to give finance time to analyze for a few. As a result of that and other circumstances listed here, staff is not recommending any changes to this particular item of this stuff. There was a great deal of interest in seeking a better mobile pay application. As has been reported, the existing app is not user friendly, period. Perhaps the best example is if you store your license plate or your credit cards, you can simply go in and repark most applications for parking to this. Um. This is a problem, especially because we wanna drive more usage to the app because the goal of the program is to steer parking behavior and to get greater compliance with parking policies. And the app is far better for you. So it'll notify you when you're about to run out of time and you need to move your car. The the app is really where we wanna drive. People not to mention the fact that it's the future of payment in most cases. And people aren't gonna go use it because it's commerce of the knowledge. It will be effective. Uh, so staff is already looking into alternatives. We are paying the existing app, so going to a new app will necessarily be a zero to now a cost item. Uh, but it will almost certainly, based on early assessment, cost notably more to move to a more functional app than the one that we're currently using. Uh, in fact, I won't even call the current function app. It's a mobile website that gets access via a Q R code. So uh, an application would be far better. Four of the five of you were very clearly support thorough explanation of this and staff is working on this. Mostly to assess what option would be best presented to you in terms of the fiscal impacts uh and what has a good track record of being very usable throughout markets compared to. Uh, making rate adjustments was another item reported on the twelfth. This had to do with the fact that we are noting that occupancy data shows that there are a number of times during the day where we are again in excess of that eighty five. In fact, there are a lot of periods of the day where we are in excess of one hundred percent occupancy. Uh, and this under the way we set the policy would say that we should need, specifically I should be, because that authority sits with me at this point in time, considering increases of the parking rates during certain times of day. Important to note that certain times of day, we do have the ability to say, well, parking's very impacted between four P M and seven P M, but not so much theater times. Uh, an increase wouldn't mean we have to increase university across the board. It would simply mean that we can pick times of the day when we need to drive parking behavior by saying go over a hundred percent, let's raise the rate, that should drive more parkers into the lots, forget more turnover on the street, which is the goal of the program. But as reported on the twelfth, we're not recommending any increases or changes in the rates at this point in time from a staff perspective. Mostly because we're just kind of getting into that period where the kiosks are in a much higher uptime, much more functionality. And it'd be good to have some more competent data for you to analyze before looking at whether we should increase or or maybe even in some cases decrease the rates. Uh, as with that eight to ten A M timeframe that I'll talk about in just a few moments. Um, so I think some more time here would would be merited at least ninety days would be my suggestion and that of the rest of staff to look at that data and you know, before we make any uh rate increases that, you know, we do have some numbers that can be, they're still very uh off put by the programs hold and they increase the rates, stay in, obviously only raise potentially that horse. So if we can be measured, it would be Oh, there was discussion moving oversight of this program from the police department. Um, I will just reiterate, what I've said many times, this was never intended to reside with the police. There is no other city anywhere that I could find a responsibility for the pro- a program like this sits with the police department. This is not what police departments do. We have no expertise in project management. We have do not have the resource resources to do much more than, you know, respond to nine one calls to try to mitigate crime is is what we do. So there's been talk of moving it, but as I mentioned at the beginning, uh, there are not resources in other city departments to manage this at this point as well. And so what staff is working on as we speak is conducting a needs analysis to try to determine what is that staffing need, especially now with the greater uptime and kiosks are not every day as high maintenance as they had been. Flaws that I reported in the past. Um, but we need to be able to bring to you a vague, a solid recommendation of what the staffing need will be here in order to um police the front end of this program. Enforcement culture, maybe far core out of the end. There's also discussion of improving wayfinding signage and couple key points that I'm hoping you'll take from this. First of all, we have no evidence whatsoever in the data or even anecdotally that parkers are having trouble finding or we did enhance the parking, the directional parking downtown significantly when we launched this program. Notice there are a lot more of the universal, the blue and white P signs directing parking in certain areas. And and while there is a desire for improved wayfinding signage as a larger project, which I'll speak about in a second, I don't think there's any need for immediate action to make sure people can find parking. There there's no evidence that they're not finding it with the current signage that's there. That being said, there's a very clear need that's been articulated by you as an elected body and by staff and the community for a broader wayfinding signage project that would include wayfinding signage well beyond the location of parking. for a broader wayfinding signage project that would include wayfinding signage well beyond the location of parking downtown, like we see in many other downtowns in the peninsula. This is a much larger project. It is in the fiscal year twenty-five, operating budget as being on hold pending resource allocation. And essentially, the posture of staff would be to bring this into the discussion, the strategy discussions that are upcoming regarding budget in the next fiscal year to see how council would like to prioritize a larger wayfinding signage project. There was also discussion of updating the parking meter kiosk display to say something like free on holiday or no payment required right on the initial screen on days where parking is free. And this is a little bit more difficult to walk through. I certainly know that that makes logical sense. That would be the ideal. But these kiosks that we chose to purchase are designed to operate without critical infrastructure, no hardwiring connections for data or for power, which means they need to go into sleep mode. They're not used for a period of time in order to preserve battery life and have them work when someone uses them. So, there's no ability to have any message that is continuously always displayed on the kiosk without draining the batteries for other applications. Currently, however, there are way too many steps required to get to a place where it tells you you don't have to pay. My understanding is you gotta enter a license plate number, you're gonna choose what your parking interval is, and then when you go to pay, it says zero dollars. There's no reason to pay. It's free today. So, I understand this should be very, very easy to fix, at least to get that message moved as far forward in the process as is humanly possible, which is exactly what staff is presently working on with the better, to see how far forward we can push that message on these days. There has been discussion about physical signage, like putting a canvas bag over the kiosk on those days, or putting signage on them that says no payment. The challenge here is, again, going to be staff departments. There are a lot of kiosks. I think eighty-six currently deployed and in service, and sending staff out to get those covered is a heavy lift and probably not sustainable for all the holidays we're designating. But if you think moving that message much more further forward is going to be possible and hopefully will be implemented as we get our next holiday. There's also this discussion of, you know, creating an easy option, which I think one of you articulated is like, why can't we just clear the quarter and walk away? A reasonable question, given the fact that, you know, that's definitely the metering that we all grew up with. Going in real quick and running to the store, no problem. I will say frankly, this just cannot be done in a license plate-based system. And we built a license plate-based system for a number of reasons, not the least of which was the ease of enforcement through the use of license plate readers. To do this would require the purchase, installation of individual meters at every single parking space. That would be the only way to have a put-in-a-quarter-and-walk-away system. That being said, an improved application essentially replicates a put-in-a-quarter-and-walk-away system, because if it's saving your data, where I live, I use Park, the apps that's available, and I go in, it saves my car, it saves my payment information, I put in the zone I'm in, how long I want to park, and I'm done. I'm off. So, we can replicate this with technology, but I think the idea of drop the quarter and go is not a reality of the program that we put together. So, staff is not recommending any changes. Then there's this issue of considering whether we should charge for parking between eight AM and ten AM on weekdays. This is, to some degree, I'll say, supported by the data. The parking occupancy is much, much lower in the mornings. I'll loosely say eight to ten. I haven't looked at the exact hours, but it's quite clear that occupancy is below the eighty-five percent. I do think it's important to note that the parking program is not structured to say that when parking falls below eighty-five percent, stop charging for parking. It is under a structure to say that perhaps cost of parking should be lower at times where we're below eighty-five percent occupancy and higher at times where we're above to drive the parking behavior we want. Not charging during that time, similar to not charging on Sundays, would bring in significant costs. We would have to change all of the signage downtown, change the ordinance. It would bring on significant costs. Reducing the rates, much, much easier, but also would have a fiscal impact, clearly. So, again, similar as with the potential for increasing rates, staff is suggesting another ninety-plus days of data before we consider the possibility of reducing rates in that earlier timeframe. And also, we would need that time to provide you with a thorough fiscal analysis of what does that have to do with sustainability of the program if we reduce those rates, and we can reduce them all the way to zero as a matter of policy, but there obviously are fiscal impacts to doing so. So, again, staff is requesting some more time to assess data. Not so much to assess data, as to let it compile, not that we have a one-functional system. So, moving forward, I just wanted to reiterate briefly for you that it's very important to acknowledge that we are in this phase where we are transitioning from deployment of a new program to the ongoing operation of the program. Even though it seems like that transition probably should have occurred a year ago, the problems with the kiosks that I reported on quite thoroughly, it means delays back. I would argue that only as we've gotten them into a much, much higher uptime rate, which we are experiencing now, most of our malfunctions now are people cramming foreign objects into coin receptacles, and the coins are not working, but overall, the kiosks are functioning far more consistent with how they do in other full-running city programs, that now we have transitioned in the last, say, three months, probably since just before that November report, to operating a program that is relatively functional. And that requires a lot of change in the city's position in what we're doing day to day. I understand, and all of staff understands, there is a desire from council and from the community in many respects to do more and to do it faster. But as I said earlier, as hard as it is to hear, there is not a resource for this. And we need to either prioritize this and make a resource for it, or accept the program needs to kind of operate on autopilot, because we cannot continually evaluate and make changes with the existing staff that we have. This has been a very, very heavy lift at the PD that has taken thousands of staff hours away from, quite frankly, more important crime-finding activities, and so we need to identify a resource moving forward. Even if we move it from the PD, that remains true, and is something we're really gonna have to talk about and consider. PD will still handle enforcement and rate setting, because the policy requires it and it's most appropriate. But this newly identified team of people or person leading a group of city staff would take over oversight of the day-to-day operations, regular analysis of the occupancy and revenue data so that you have a full deck of cards to play with in making decisions, handling the technical issues day-to-day with the kiosks and other systems, which are in, have happened in every parking program. And in probably of greatest importance, they will handle the communications out to the community about the program, the changes, getting feedback and keeping this in moving in a positive direction. In terms of the recommendation, as is consistent with the title of the presentation, staff's recommendation is that you receive this more parking program update and adopt the resolution. It would amend the recognized holidays for paid parking, also exempting this of the California Environmental Quality Act of CECL. That concludes my presentation. I certainly remain available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Is, do we have questions of the chief on the presentation? Thank you, chief. So, I did send comments and questions ahead of time, so most of what I was saying shouldn't be a surprise, and I'll try to keep it to questions to restrain the comments. I'll do my best. So, regarding the very real issue of staff to work on such changes, you know, we're doing, you said that staff is conducting a needs analysis. Is that an analysis, might be a question for the city manager. Will this analysis be completed in time for our planning so that we can book a budget for this for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget season?
The answer is yes. The, as you know, the musical chairs that's happening at City Hall, one of the new resources coming in, whatever key assignments will be to create the downtown parking program to figure out, just as the chief indicated, what are those needs? What do we need for a resource? I don't believe it's a full-time position. I don't think they warrants that kind of investment. But the question, what is it? What will this person do? Do we go to a third party to contract certain pieces of it out? So, we're gonna create the program, bring it back to the council, and then through the council process, obviously, you seek resources to pay for it.
Great, thank you. Regarding the, so just to just say one big comment that kind of informs a lot of the questions, a lot of the comments I'll have later, is that the way that the November twelfth meeting went down kind of made it really difficult for staff to understand what the direction from council was. And this was just no fault of the way the way it went or anything like that. It was the fact that we got to, we had fourteen minutes, we had fourteen minutes for deliberation of this very, very important item. So, we were rushing, we were all rushing through. Michael made the suggestion that one, each person just gotta go through and say what's important to them. And that's what we did, and but as a result, there was never any, you know, hand up of, do we have concurrents on this one? Do we have concurrents on this one? So, staff just kind of had to figure that out, and they got a few of them wrong. You know, a good example, I went first. Michael started his statement after me with, I think, is the direct quote, I think I agree with a lot. Councilmember Hamilton said lots of his points, and then he went in and added sport. So, it's like, but then, so many of the points I brought up, only one council member stressed it was support. So, we have to be really vigilant about getting clear notes when providing direction on these things. Another example was the eight AM one. So, I brought that as a new item. Wasn't on the list. Brought that at the end, and I was rushing. I only went through what was on the slides, and then I remembered, shoot, I have two more. So, I asked, we go at the very end, if I could throw two more on there, and I did. But I mentioned eight AM, ten AM, and then, and at that point, there's one minute left. Rico took his turn very, very fast and actually said, I'm in favor of the eight to ten, and then the meeting was turned. And then it ended up in here saying only one council member is excited for exploring this. That's, and that's what's said in the staff report, but now in the presentation, it says that we're looking at it. So, I guess that comment that I sent in after reading the staff report, made that change. The, so, seeing tonight is clear delineation which of these things we support, which we don't. Didn't get that at the last meeting. So, that's gonna be really important to be answered before. So, thank you for letting me. So many questions, but I'll let me make sure that we get that out at the beginning so that this discussion is in the right directions. Any other questions on the presentation of the chief? Seeing hearing that.
I have three speaker cards. John Marshall, followed by Kim Hahn-Di, followed by Rebecca Muller.
Good evening, council. Well, it sounds like you understand what it feels like to get three minutes to talk. I don't want you to have to do this quickly, Mike, pardon me. Okay. So, you know what it feels like to get three minutes to talk and try to get your order. Doesn't work. A couple of things I want to make comment on is, after listening to the chief, this sounded like a complete and total failure. Whoever in spirit this thing served into their homework. We're not staff. We're not made available to fix these problems. So, it's pretty embarrassing. I wanted to actually talk about the permit parking. I read this. I'm not the most intelligent person in the room here, I'm sure, but there's a lot of conflicting notes to go back and forth. One of the things, in order to get a parking permit for the use of my house, my apartment, five seventy-four El Camino Real, is I would need to have pre-continuous blocks, both sides being permit parking, and that's impossible. So, there's gonna be a few people, a few locations that aren't gonna fall into the confines of what this is all about. The surveys, if we submit these and doesn't meet all the requirements, but complicated format, if it's denied, it's on a one-year moratorium before it's gonna be looked at again. Pretty unfair. Red parking being forced the hour of six PM and nine AM daily except for holidays. Don't know about that, because in front of our apartment, it says seven days a week, eight to eight. Didn't say anything about exclusion of a holiday. I had the opportunity to have my ninety-year-old mother come to my house on Christmas Eve, and we had to take the risk, and so we thought, getting a ticket, get her into the house, and back out of the house, because she was gone by eight o'clock before eight o'clock. So, I'm spewing through these things, because I don't have a lot of time to talk. One of the things it says on the MAQs is, right here, it says, who will provide the enforcement? The city of San Bruno Police Department provides enforcement. No other entity is allowed to issue parking citations from the city. Well, I've got a lot of tickets from another entity, LAZ. So, I would like to sit down with probably one of the council people. I tried to do this with staff. I had a forty-five-minute meeting with the city manager, the chief of police, and we had a one-hour allocation. I had forty-five minutes that I programmed myself to talk, and there was really no response back, except for we'll get back to you within thirty days. And that's been, we're probably going on about a year now. So, this is a game of fatigue right now. They're playing. We're not getting facts. We're not getting answers. We're just saying we need three more months or six more months, and it's just not working quite correctly. So, I'm inviting one or two of the city council to call me, six five zero five eight three six four four six is the phone number you can reach me at, it's the office number. I'd like to sit down and have a real conversation, not just some opinion about how things are failing and how we're gonna fix them, or if we can't fix them, so we'll have to fix it. I also have two photographs that show back in April nineteen, the street light in front of my apartment. Of course, I love this. Now I know why you can't make good sense. You can, it's longer than that compare. I'm sorry. So, I, again, I would like to invite some of the council to sit down with me and have a real conversation. Don't hold it all in. Don't try to respond in a month and take your head to do so. We need to do something. People are really getting agitated here. We have an entire system that's a total failure. It does not work. Get rid of it and start over again. Figure it out. We've got the problem. Now, let's get the answers to it. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm so, I'm, so we have the, I'm having gifts. I have nails on, and I have some San Bruno. So, I've been coming to meetings and see with the parking meter. Really, I think the business of my also of everybody on San Bruno, so my business really dropped down to forty-five or thirty percent. First of all, a lot of my clients come in in the afternoon to be able to have a parking meter up to eight o'clock. It really affects us, because that's when people, after work, they came. Why don't have to come to me when they can go for somebody else, and they don't have to worry about parking? And also, my business also really work on weekend as well, that's when people come to relax and enjoy it. So, if you put the meter on Sunday, I might just drop down thirty percent. Why don't have to come to me on, to us, when they can go, again, go somewhere else on Sunday and relax? They don't have to worry about meter. They don't have to worry about getting a ticket. So, and also the kiosk. Love it, you know, in my life, I go on four hundred block, and then when people better like it, four meter, four kiosk, they're not working at all. I see you, I see they come working on fixing it, but that one of them is right near us. It's right, two door down, four back. It never worked. It always worked. Credit card on working. Order never worked. So, when people come to you, the QO, the QO take too long. You have to fill out name, email, address. It takes too long before you can get paid. So, in, I think, can you fix that QO, you know, around four hundred block, make sure it works properly? Second, the QO can, anyway, simplify it, where you can put the license and then pay, line you view and the QO. So, we don't have to fill name and address. Some people might not comfortable to give the whole thing, name, address, email, and the whole thing before I can get paid. And then they'll pay the information, might get lost or might get, you know, like, um, pad. So, that's why they don't feel comfortable to be around with the QO. So, and then the, the money, I hope we come, I hope they'll soon, that way people can be around one time, and they continue to pay every time they come. Because my business, they come every couple of weeks, let you that, and you come home, but then they're not feeling happy about it. They're not doing what they said on and off, you know, keep losing custom. So, I hope you, you know, I'm here today to help, make it easier for people to pay, make it easier for people to still continue to come to have, you know, people, business in downtown San Bruno, so thank you.
Now, so in regards to the presentation that we just heard from the chief, I think it's, I would like to remind everybody watching, the parking program started in twenty nineteen. So, the city of San Bruno, the study, everything started five years ago. So, to hear every time we come to these meetings, we need more time, we need more time, we need more time. For us, time is money. We have children. We have families. We are trying to live, and we don't have time for the city to figure out who's gonna handle this. So, I think it's urgent to bring in the outside consultant, maybe the people that conducted the study. Maybe we can reach out to one of our neighboring cities and ask for Maybe we can reach out to one of our neighboring cities and ask for help. Um, asking for time, uh. I keep hearing about these kiosks. You know, we have an attorney on staff. If there's a way to get out of the contract and start over without, you know, incurring more costs. I think that option should really be looked into. We're the only town in the peninsula that has these kiosks that are not hardwired. So all of these issues that are coming up is because we're, we deferred from the rest of the community. Uh, unnecessarily, and that's where we're seeing so many problems. So I wanted to also talk about the Wayfair sign, the finding signage. If we are changing and acknowledging the holidays, all of the signage right now says, um, including seven days a week. Most of the signage does not say excluding holidays. If you walk around, there are some signs that say excluding holidays. There are other signs that say seven days a week. So there's already that discrepancy between what the, uh, people are, are being told by the signs themselves. So we already need to change the signage. We need to figure it out. If we can give Sunday off or do whatever and do it all at once. The signage that the chief is talking about, there are P signs, literally twelve, maybe sixteen inches high. They're all the way up top and a lot of them are placed literally under blue banners. There's a blue P and it says ten hours, literally this big. So you, for somebody my size, you have to look up and actually try to read. All day long, people do not see the signs. We're talking about the license plates, it being an issue and we, we went to a license plate place program. A simple solution is to number the spots, numbering the spots and going to numbered spots would help our senior community so much. All day long, I feel so bad for our seniors that have to deal with the license plate. It would fix the problem of the inaccuracies of entering the license plate. It would fix the indicator of people saying, I didn't see, I didn't know. Um, it would also help with, um, just the community feel of like making our lives easier. As right now, we feel like everything in San Bruno has to be hard. We have no economic development, no help for us. Um, so. The last thing I want to say, numbering our stalls, uh. Reduce enforcement, reducing enforcement, we cut the costs and it would help everybody. So there's very simple solutions. Please, we just need to get this done.
No, the speaker cuts.
Thanks for your comments. Um, with that, bring it back to council for follow-up or other, and I apologize. Uh, city manager, chief, did you want to respond to any comments or just go ahead with the council?
I think just maybe briefly, Mr. Mayor, one of the speakers was talking about an ordinance that actually relates to residential parking permits, not to paid parking programs or to separate programs.
That is correct. Residential parking.
And I think the speaker was just saying. We're, we're there, where he's located, is that it requires three block radius, which really, there's not that residential, that's what I think is.
That's what I was speaking about this evening and a year ago.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's, there's was a comment about receiving tickets from Laz and only. The police department being authorized to offer tickets. That's from the residential parking permission program. There have not been any tickets issued for violations of residential parking permit programs because there are no residential parking permits.
Okay.
I guess there is.
Um, anything, city manager?
Yeah, just for clarity, uh, one of the comments made was, we should have known that, you know, about the staffing issue, uh, for this. You know, to, to remind the council on November twelfth, at that point, there were two experts in the city who understood this program very well. One was the police chief and one is the police captain. As you know, the police chief is leaving. Which probably don't know is the police captain happens to be at a three-month training on the East Coast. So our resources are missing today. Then we're not missing two months ago. We had the resources two months ago. So what we're facing is moving forward, the resources are non-existent. Which is why we're trying to figure out kind of program so we can, we can roll it forward. We did have resources. We had two very competent people trying to run the program. You know, from the PD and now we're, yeah, that should, that, so. We had the resources in it.
So, um. To Mr. Mayor. Start with, I don't know. So I want to go through some of the issues happening because I have to warn you of making solutions to, um. So we can actually have a, have a, let's name those on the box of these. Um, so, uh, the first one is, we don't know, and before we get. Before we get to that, one, just kind of operational question. When we implemented the program, we had a discussion about. Um, not placing a kiosk directly in front of city hall, I don't think. And, uh, because we wanted to make it easy for people to come in and everything along all of that, it was just that one, it was just that one spot. Everyone agreed to it and then a kiosk computer. It's still there. The kiosk is still there. It's, it's basically steps, you know, I don't know if it's functional or not. I'm part of the back, it's come on page. I mean, so I part of it. So I don't know if it's actually functional, but I'm just. It seems like it would be pretty. Fairly simple procedure to remove that kiosk and then replace one of the damage meters. There's one that's not functional in front of Rico Pan, there's one that's not functional in front of Grand Leader, they've been out for months. We can at least fix one of them because we've got. Supposedly, I would imagine working meter, uh, in front of city hall, a lot of the first place. So, um, I'm hoping that that's something that we can look at if I don't, if I need to, if I need to. Get incurrence from, 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 uh, my colleagues for something so simple. So I'm not. Regarding the. Or pick, pick, bring myself, we know. I have a comment the twelfth that. I'm not a very, I think, that's south of San Mateo Avenue. Gun store, there's two sushi restaurants, there's a dojo. That, that area is, 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 uh. Used consistently all day. Uh, but north, uh. North, uh, on, you know, north of San Mateo Avenue, on the triangle intersection. That area is very, very under, uh, underutilized and I do feel that we should explore. In the neighborhood requirement there just to give, to, to give some relief. Uh, yeah, and then that would actually free us up some. So we need to be able to replace the ones that they're damaged. So I would like to make a motion. To direct staff to explore removing parking kiosks on, you know, north of San Mateo Avenue. City attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. Uh, I was just going to point out that the, um. The agenda title for this item is to receive an update and consider the resolution. Um, so I think it's appropriate to have a discussion about paid parking program relative to the, um, update. Um, I would be concerned about going through a list of recommendations for the future just because the, uh, limited agenda title. And what's to be considered.
I would argue that we have, we have. Members of the public here, everyone is, is, everyone is here thinking that we're going to be talking about making improvements to our parking program. I mean, I, I. Yeah, I found that there's going to be people saying, oh, you talked, you, you talked about changing some of these recommendations. I didn't know that before I did that. That doesn't seem reasonable to me.
Phrasing that I, that, you know, the, the agenda title seems a little more limited. I'm not, I, I will leave it on the mayor's discretion on how he wants to get direction moving forward. Um. Yeah, that's, those are my thoughts on this.
Well, first, I think. We show out. Council to talk with you or wanting to have a motion before, I mean, we get three.
Okay, that's right. I would have liked that all progress. Sure.
Then, um. I may need to, uh. Come to the attorney because I do know have action and that's the resolution, which is just to. Make sure that it reads correctly. And what I would want to say on the holidays too, is somebody had told me federal holidays. I think we need to conscientious because, uh, for federal. And, uh, Mr. Carter, Chris Carter added, you know, that was a federal holiday. So your channel is federal all. So there's a lot of, well, federal holidays. So that's why, sorry, because they asked me this on Friday. It would mirror the city's, uh. Holidays, just, just so we know. Actually, yeah.
Okay, so I, I will have, like, I think we should see later and I didn't, uh. Obviously, we have a, we have the, the main motion that, that folks have kind of, yeah. So, but I, I'm just still continuing through the list that if anybody knows what I'm going to, so that you can consider that at your party. Um, the next one had to do with moving way, way finding signage and I agree that the, the bigger issue. For the way finding signage for people to find our, not have it first place, that's a whole, that's part of the whole, um, bigger project. But the issue that I do see related to paid, paid parking is that. People still somehow don't know that parking in the lots is cheaper. We don't have anything posted that says parking in the lots is cheaper. You have to figure out that there is a lot. Using the, the piece things that were mentioned in public comment. And then go there and see, oh, like it's cheaper. Um, you know, I, I, I posted on it several times on social media, but. We're going to park it down, down, our following may be on Facebook. Um, so the, so I, um, I. Would like to see us explore how can, how can we add some, some signage, um, that inform. Coming into our downtown, that there are cheaper options for lots. I, I front on the street down town, I go down all the time. Which is far, I'm by there. And I. The street twice, since the French heard it. What is I just? Lock it. Displaying free on holiday. The one that made that original last on the twelfth and it was never intended that. Meter should stay on, so you just glance at it and see it. It's. You hit the button, wake it up, and that would be the first thing that you see. And we discussed this when we, before we implemented the program. And one of the examples, chief, you brought up. Was as, as part of the discretion that we would have. Remember you stating an example that, let's say we wanted to be parking free on small business Saturday or whatever. You said that the beater would be able to display. The, uh, I believe that what you said, that it could display, parking is free courtesy of the city of San Bruno. That, so this was something that we talked about at the beginning as being possible. So I do, like. When you have a slide here. Meets when, what we would. Well, I do want to make sure that we know that the original ask was never to have it staying on all the time. I understand the battery. Regarding the. And then an easy option to put it or, that. I think that came in as part of, I went back and watched, watched our discussion. It was easy because it was only fourteen minutes. And it came, that was part of the discussion about. It's kind of got conflated, although they were shorter, shorter, um. Short-term options in the lots. And what I had described there was, uh. To group. Short-term spaces together. Think, you know, paint them green all around. And then have a dedicated kiosk that we would also paint. That would be just for those spaces and it would be very, very obviously part of the twenty-minute spots and their kiosk that's green, that says it's for the twenty-minute spots and it would be really easy. And when I, and I, I'll, when I said that, you actually gave it, gave it one of the. That were, throw something down. So I, I thought that that got captured, but it, but it, but it didn't. So, um, it's. Something else that I'll, I'll, I'll bring up later. The. Let's see here. The, the eight to ten, I already, I already brought that up. Here, what, what that one did and did you think that we should, uh. It, it's, it's going to do it, it's going to. So the right one, I don't know, I'm, I, I'd like for us, he runs out, we're going to enforce that between eight and ten AM. Down, down, basically, or no, ready. Sleep. Second to last, sorry, I'm just. The. I, at the end of the, right after I brought up ten, I brought up an item, seat compensation for T two, for kiosk options. Because we know that, that a lot, we, a lot of that, that staff time that. Chief mentioned that we've spent was chasing her tails on that, on, on the issue. When I found out, I found out much, much later that it was a firmware issue that involved all of the meters that were keeping them, was keeping them from, from getting stigma. And wearing down, wearing down batteries. That's system addressed, which is great, but we lost a lot of effort and a lot of time and I do think we should, I do think we do need to see compensation. I know that that was captured because it was in the list that was in, the list that you mentioned, that was in our, um, in both of our digests. So I know that it was captured, but it didn't make it into the staff report or in the presentation tonight. So that's something I think people look at. And then lastly, regarding the enforcement, um. I told the story already to, um, to the city manager during our one-on-one. Over the holidays, I went downtown, so I went out many times. And at no point. During. During my visits, did I see a, a single last officer walking down the street writing tickets. Because every time I saw a last officer, there were either two, but most of the time, three, and even a couple of times, four, walking, you know, walking in a pack. Writing out tickets. It seems like super overdue. But then the other thing that I, that I was, that I was thinking about is I know that we have not given directions for there to be quotas or anything like that, that every officer must come back with a certain number of, of tickets written. But when you're working with a bunch of colleagues at the same time. And you're the one who didn't write in your tickets today, you have to think even subconsciously, unconsciously that that's going to, that's going to affect, I'm like. Never, and I think having so many, so many officers. Can simultaneously is making them more aggressive, even unconsciously. So I really, really want to look at not having so many folks, um. Patrolling at the same time. Because every time I would see three, I know that there's one more that's manager, he's on the street. So it's just like, there's so many people dedicated to this. So. That is me, that is the end. I was, I appreciate the, the time, the time. Comments or questions? Still.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just expressed that. It's very frustrating to hear that the staff is not recommending any changes on some of the issues that we, we have been discussing over and over. I think we've heard long enough from the public that we need changes on the kiosk. Um, we still hear it that the kiosks are malfunctioning and, uh. We need to make this as priority. Because the public has waited long enough. I think from the last meeting on November twelfth. The staff received. A lot of guidance from, from the council and I remember we mentioned, um. About removing the Sunday. And what I was expecting today, uh, to see in the, in the presentation is. What the city will, will lose. I know it's only three percent, but I was hoping to see that figure and. Make a recommendation that we can move forward on removing the Sunday, but we didn't see that tonight. Um, another thing also is, um, changing the, changing the, uh, the parking lot to a shorter term. When initially, when we received a lot of complaints from the public, we immediately changed, made some changes on, on the, uh, the, the San Mateo. And I was still wanting to see if, if we make that change, we, I didn't hear any negative impact when it comes to any financial. Um, uh, negative financial impact on changing, uh, the, uh, express, uh, parking. For the San Mateo downtown. So. I also wanted to see that, what would be the negative effect if we were to make the, the changes in the, the parking lot, the same as the San Mateo. Uh, that's the information that I think the, the council is seeking, um, in order for us to make those changes right away, but. I don't see any negative effect that when we made the changes on San Mateo Avenue, therefore. I, I think it's, it's okay to, uh, make that changes. What the public is asking for a long time ago was to make another changes on the, on the parking lot. If we can see the, you know, the. The numbers. If we can meet that eighty-five percent or, or even less, or not so much of a negative impact on our, uh. On, on the budget, then, uh. These are the changes that I would support. Immediately. Thank you.
That's right. Um, so yes, um. I, I think. And I understand. I think the first thing that we need, council to confirm and go. Think the first thing that we need to counsel to confirm and go. Let us. I'm sure that we have and there is uh yeah, we can do it. Probably needed, but we should at least make sure it's very. What we are. Slow to look at. So and then secondarily. Is prioritize those things because we have we I believe we don't understand that. You know, we're we're kind of. We're out of resources here. To be able to make the changes. We have a chief that is leading. First and second in command. Because some of these issues isn't going to be here for another month. And where are we gonna go from here? And. First, fall of twenty nineteen, it wasn't real project until we got. There is action on us. We're gonna know that the kiosk were in form, having the problems that we did and clearly this council wouldn't have. Went forward with it knowing it was going to be this problematic. Finding things as we go. So, Mr. Mayor, my recommendation is that we go ahead and. For team that running the digest for a combination, just so that we could. Get a clear clarity on what the what the council supports in staff looking into and then. From those staff. The council can prioritize what's preferable to go forward with and that decision would be based on staff's analysis and ability. And I think that's kind of one way of going. We could be here a long time. I think it's important to have that we could get that that we have numbers on majority. And and clarity on that, so. Spare so, but I'll I'll come back and have comments when we kind of come to that maybe. Space. He was a favor short short of forgetting.
This is a moment of, but I already got seven things to talk. Hey, or council, they said like, I want to make sure that uh, Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. And and I'll careful careful to uh choose my words carefully instead of quoting meters, uh possibly supporting something that I didn't intend to support, so. Um, I would just say that uh there are a number of things that are still concerning, but uh. Let me start by saying that I absolutely appreciate everything that Ryan has done to get this program off the ground. I know it started off in public parks. And never went anywhere for a long time and uh. Ryan, you were actually able to get this program implemented and this was not something that uh the city council. Kind of came up with on a whim. It's something that the merchants downtown asked for. They wanted. They wanted us to solve. Their parking issue and um. I didn't want the meters initially. I didn't think it was a good idea. Uh. I didn't have a better solution and uh seeing that we're achieving an eighty five percent number, I think is something to be. Hopeful, right? Okay, I think it's a complete failure. I don't think starting starting at this point would make any sense in that problem that was something very similar and. Uh, I think where we. I think they're big and say it wasn't going this. Kiosk. Um. And I don't know what it would take to um shift those over closer to a light pole and get them powered, but uh. So a possibility. That's something I think could alleviate the issues. But I know I saw on the data today, just kind of throw that idea out there because uh as I walk into town and I see, you know, we have uh Christmas lights standing up. Old looking open connection there, looking great. Just show those things over a few feet and plug them in there. It is what it is. Um. So, um, yeah, I'm still hearing uh a few members of the public. I'm afraid they're still shooting. That was something that I think universally set out here, want to make sure we're addressing this. And so I want to ask in as as a part of our current operations, who's responsible for identifying and parent uh fair prices?
So we currently have a community service officer who is assigned to log into the system where you can look at in real time which kiosks are functional, which ones are not every day. Uh, and then depending on what the issue is, either that community service officer is addressing it or we do have a minimal maintenance contract with LAS. Uh, for things like, you know, a lot of times the malfunctions are as simple as like if it's around a seat paper or there's coin jam. Those are all things that LAS is responsible for handling. The CSO has taken upon itself to develop, of course, kids. More robust repairs, so we need to replace a part. Others that's malfunctioning cycle, I'll go out and give that. So. That's the current system um at a high level that's being used to monitor throughout time.
Okay, so that's that sounds great. Uh. Want to make sure that there is a program in place that we're proactively doing, going to reactively, proactively. Says it means sounds like uh councilor perhaps to. His observations would indicate. Did talk about aggressive enforcement. They did a previous meeting, we said that that was being addressed with LAS. They don't know how much real direction are allowed to give them, being that they're a contractor uh. But i- if we, if if our contractor is being uh. Unnecessarily uh. Forceful and initiative, that's certainly uh something we don't want to encourage uh. I don't think that's gonna have uh net benefit in the. Uh. And and the thing I just wanted to uh, oh, I I was gonna ask, so it's mentioned today about. Numbered spots versus licensed place. I know we had that discussion before. I don't remember. What the answer to that question was, but I I. I know that it's come up before. There's a reason why I didn't go that route that far. I could be uh reminding what that was.
I think that there was never a. Of a really thorough analysis of paying by space beyond that. Uh, we wanted, we knew we needed enforcement based on license plate readers. Uh, you you can enforce by space, but not with the same efficiency that you can using our own license plate readers. I do think it's important to note here, this is not, there's a little bit of a misrepresentation here of being a zero sum game. When you deploy. Space specific parking where you have to memorize a parking space and go into the kiosk and enter it, you have the same problem that you have with people having license plates entering a wrong. Space numbers, people filling tickets saying I paid, but they entered a wrong space. It it it's not the answer all. I I don't know that it would be much really better or worse than the license plate. Any system, but the primary reason the license plate based. System was to enable license plate based enforcement, a big piece of which was that license plate readers facilitate a litany of other enforcement potentialities, including a residential. Parking permit program for which the city has no funds to purchase its own robust license plate reading fleet. And so this enabled us to establish a competency that might be applicable to other programs in future without having to shell out a lot of money to.
Okay, got it. Yeah, and that 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 makes sense. Yeah, I uh I I knew there was a reason. Definitely easy to remember, two or three digits versus a license plate that works. I form a clarification of that. And uh the the other thing I was going to ask is um rather than um. If we were flying to Archer and and a transition happening, I was gonna ask if there was any potential that could uh. Have an M U neighboring jurisdiction that could oversee the program, uh even if it's in the in the interim time, just so that we are. Uh actively pursuing some of the uh. The. But the the at least the oversight and monitoring of the system, um, it it can have its say, personally. Yeah, I shot down the idea of uh. Some committee because we felt that I direct things out and now there's nobody on staff working on it. I think that's gonna drag things out longer, so. Just kind of thinking of something uh. An alternative that maybe can fill that gap until we make that a five water. Parking program, if you know what it looks like, I think it would be the idea is without losing any momentum. And then uh finally, I know we're gonna talk about each individual idea here, whether it's supported or not, um. I I just want to say that we've heard repeatedly that. At every decision that may just have a impact on on the overall overall program. Uh, we heard from our CFO that this program is is already losing money and any change that we make in terms of reducing rates. Or limiting times only hurts the program. And um. It's it's the taxpayers that end up paying the difference. So I mean, when we rolled out this program, there was a promise, um, you know, that it it was actually gonna more than pay for itself. Um, I remember the council member or vice mayor Medina, uh, you know, talking about, you know, let's start thinking about what we're gonna do with all that extra money. Your regards losing money. And so I I just want to make sure that if we want to pursue these ideas, that everybody understands. That we're gonna lose more money. And that there are consequences to that and we're already talking about not paying back the initial investment. We're talking about um. Taking other measures to try to make this thing at least break even, because it's not breaking even now. Uh, that's why the data is so important for the way to make some of these decisions. And if staff is telling us we still don't have everything to make those decisions. I I would just caution us not to force the decision and. So that aggravates. Thank you.
That question was asked. Maybe to city manager CFO and that's why council member Alvarez. The the question comes up that which is to when council member Salazar said is Sundays. So, sounds good. But I heard from the chief that that is probably the second highest day of the week. So, again, not the account. But if that means. Whatever you're moving on Sunday. How do you gain that back? Then you're almost happy to distribute it in seven days. I'm sorry, in the uh other days of the week. So I'm trying to ask, do we have a number of what that would? What we believe it might mean if Sundays are free.
Well, we do not have a specific number for you as to what the loss of revenue would be to to exempt. I think it's important to note that it wouldn't just be an issue of lost revenue. The point of the program being to mitigate impact parking. You'd be taking a data where there is obvious evidence of impacted parking and saying, well, we don't need to try to mitigate it. The number would not be particularly difficult to generate with these Sundays.
Mr. Mayor, um, and members of council, I think, I was uh administrative services director. Um, I didn't have a chance to connect with the chief of the fourth meeting, um, but we were able to run the numbers for December. Uh, looking at, say, December is a hot month. Some might argue that December has less activity, some might argue it has more activity. We just don't know because we don't have the history. Um, however, on the uh, on the average, Sundays generate about two thousand dollars in parking fees. Uh, which is just slightly above the second highest day, which is very, which is just uh just shy of two thousand dollars, which is Saturday. Um, so as uh vice mayor, I'm sorry, as council member, um. Salazar had mentioned, uh, the report that we provided at several uh meetings ago. Uh, with regard to the financial sustainability of the program, uh, it is without uh some extraordinary measures such as. Not retaining the initial investment. Um, the the program is uh is running a deficit and so looking at uh accepting Sundays. Uh, that would result in additional investment by eight thou- about eight thousand dollars per per month. And of course, when we get more data, we'll have the ability to understand if that's seasonal or if that's reflective or typical Sunday activity. Oh, okay.
And then I I'm thinking, uh. And then there's discussion, uh, I don't want to make sure I'm right, that the alcomino reality leave was about two point nine seven. Potential revenue. And that uh if so, if it was to make eight to ten free throughout the system. Between signs need to be updated, etc. Um. Do we know, have a guess in it, but well, I guess we do. Uh, do you have an idea of what that might be?
I don't have the specific data by an hour straight to ten. Percent of the monthly revenues.
Because I think that is uh one of those things. If if you start chipping away and we have it, it basically would be subsidizing. And and therefore not paying back and paying for for the program. And that's, I assure that council member Salazar, that is a concern.
Or correct, and and if I may, Mr. Mayor. The other thing that I highlighted. Last report, so we have not charged any staff time to this project. So thousands of hours that the chief. Presented, which, um, you know, just diversity accounts, that's probably, that may even be an underestimate. Uh, those those hours have not been charged and so they were paid for uh through the general fund and I think la- largely that's a policy question. We didn't quite understand. All of the uh factors that go into all of this, but as we look to sustain the program long term, uh, the decision would be need would need to be made about whether to start allocating. Staff time uh to that project or any other additional costs that may arise out of changes to the book.
Thank you. Um. I'm gonna ask her recess. So I'd like to talk to the council just because I have about seven or eight items here. I think that there's others, so we're probably too attached. And I know the action item was on the resolution to update the ordinance. For holiday, I I want to have a uh a brief recess.
I mean, thank you for the time. I think you have a reason to use it as needed. So I I make that's. This is after talking with you, this is a study session. Main action is the resolution to the ordinance and the holiday. So it was a study session. We can go through these topics. This, I can interrupt, it's not a study session. It's just an update. Oh, I'm sorry, it is an action. So it is an action item, one item. And it's just an update, I'm sorry, it's just, it's an update. So what I'm going to do is go through and I. This is the ones that I, Councilmember Perez, it's like, they have, a lot of, they not have got it. Well, you you brought it home. You you brought us about the LAS officers in the pack. And I don't think that's, that's, okay, that's the only one. So maybe we could just take, let's see if there's an answer. Let's say, what I also want to do is set real expectations. So as an example, I'm going to tell you that I'm going to have a concern about Sundays. That's just me because it's a hundred thousand dollars and I've just been told. So where where does that, how does that regroup? So we can have some dialogue, but I think that'll be on on this. So Chief, is there anything as far as the LAS personnel, as far as, hold on a minute, about?
Just a couple of points there. One is that they're, they were working numbers many times for safety purposes. It's a delicate topic, but these folks are repeatedly yelled at, assaulted, they've been followed, they've been spit on, they've been threatened. So there's a safety element. I'll acknowledge that that doesn't necessarily mean you need four together. When you've been seen for, my understanding, is that it's because they're training new staff. So I I don't, that being said, we've addressed sort of the fact that there's been some, I will call it aggressive, but maybe over-sellless enforcement sometimes. To me, that mostly relates to issuing a ticket as someone is, as was talked about type one minute, you know, walking away from their car, which they've been instructed not to. We do have a lot they do and don't in terms of enforcement. But oftentimes, we don't know if they're following what we told them to do until we are forced to adhere to a plan. So happy to continue working down that path. On a, as an SME here, a subject matter expert here, I would say that I do not think that there is a problem with them working in groups and that it's mitigating some of the treatment they're getting from not so gracious members of the community.
Yeah, I think the the training piece, that makes, that makes perfect sense. And do we have any, any data and? You know, when there are incidents like that, do those get reported? Do they, are we logging them to be? How often it's taking place that 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 the? That the LAS officers are getting accosted and something? I would say it is viewed again, I just want to understand how how often it's happening.
I would say it depends, right? When it's severe, when there's an actual assault matter, yes, those are being reported, crime reports are being taken in many cases. Dressing that way. It's it's more the passive yelling, following, which, these are not police officers. You know, we're, I'm trained to be screamed and yelled at, spent most of my own life being screamed and yelled at. These folks really are not, or do they have the means or the powers of arrest, defendants, all of those things happen. So the the best illustration would be for me to pull up body camera video, which would be incredibly embarrassing for some members of this community the way that they treat LAS enforcement officers. That's not isolated to San Bruno. Enforcement creates animosity, can anger, people don't like to get tickets. Fortunately, when you're carrying a gun or wearing a badge, people are a little less linked to that frustration on you. But for the LAS and parking enforcement, community service officers, when they they were doing this enforcement, dealing with this for years. So I'm simply saying there is a safety component and in many cases legitimate reason for them to be working in groups. We could certainly look at the data and see if there's anything that supports the sort of assertion here that when they work in groups, their enforcement is more aggressive. But I don't, I don't know that I would, you know, say that that's accurate enough that I would stem that behavior of them walking, you know, worth a lot of time.
I would hope that at least we can just communicate that that's a, that's a fierce, we can at least. Talk about it internally. Because again, you know, we're just just talking with yours a little during during the recess. If I'm walking, if I'm in class offices and I'm walking with a partner all day, paired up because of safety reasons or whatever. My partner writes writes thirty tickets today and I write three. That even even if there's nothing in their in their, through the way that they do their internal ratings or 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 interviews or anything, there's a subconscious thing they're saying. And now I've been saying, well, okay, for example, if I can legally write a ticket or handwrite a ticket, because he just got out of his car and that's written. I'm thinking would be, I think there's a, I don't, I'm not saying that LAS officers are writing tickets aggressively to be, to for for the point of being aggressive or average training like that. I do think that there's, that they're kind of not probably biased.
And I think that's fair. And to be clear, this is very, very important to us organizations. Start before we even brought LAS on board at a meeting with their entire executive team and explain to them that it was going to be very important for them to acclimate to our culture. The San Bruno Police Department has never been a zero tolerance police department. It's not how we do things and I don't want a parking enforcement body doing that. This was made abundantly clear in the talk about quotas. We talked about understanding and attempting to steer behavior using enforcement and not driving enforcement. But you've heard me say it many times, I think what we've accomplished with the police department is because culture needs policy for breakfast, lunch and dinner. And they're not yet, they're never going to be a part of the San Bruno Police Department culture. They're part of the LAS parking enforcement culture. What we're attempting to do is tell them, you will acclimate to the way we do things here, or we're going to find another criteria. Those conversations are continuously appearing. Every time a member of the community voices to us that there was aggressive enforcement by them or something that was inappropriate, it's being addressed by the traffic sergeant. I will say that on many of those occasions, we are looking at body on camera video and seeing that that exchange is not exactly as postulated by the member of the community. So there are two sides to this story is all that I'm saying. I first of all, I don't want four LAS, not if not in training, four of them walking in the street together. It's a poor deployment of resources, just like having four pops standing on the same corner of a parade is a poor disbursement of resources. So we will work on this issue. I don't think it requires action from council for its work of eye because it's something we're continuously dealing with.
Thank you. Okay. So when I feel is important is that when I'm going to give motions, because again, it is, as I explained earlier, becoming legal. I'm sorry, city attorney. City attorney. But what I do believe is necessary is, so the five of us up here. Set the rates, etc. So we need to be very clear to staff size of what we're asking. Because in all can, it's going to be all. So that means it goes into a deficit and we're suspicing parking. So that's on us. And then figure out how to put that into the budget to pay for it. So with that, let me. Let's go to displaying free on holidays. And that was to bring it up before. Am I believing that that is something that can be accommodated or is that?
Mr. Mayor, this is also one word for what it's worth from our end. We wouldn't require any action from the council. We are going to bring that message as far forward in the current programming as is possible. And if that's not far forward, we'll look into what the alternatives are and reprogram.
Thank you. We'll make progress. El Camino, south of San, San Mateo Avenue. I I can't tell you, City Net Services parking lot gets utilized quite a bit. I can tell you that I remember City Bank. I've had nineteen cars at City Bank and yet I go into the bank and there's not a lot of people there. So people are utilizing other opportunities. And again, the bank closes on Saturday at two and at three in the day.
One thing that I did find interesting is when I last went to Redwood City, City Council dated for the reorganization. And they charge Monday through Saturday.
And, uh, they charge Monday through Saturday, eight to eight streets and lots. So to go to the council meeting, I had to spend three dollars so that I can feel sit in the audience at a public meeting. So, um, um, that is what it is and I, and I did not stay at all. But I just served a, the first part of it. So I have, you know, with San Mateo, everybody does use kiosks. But anyway, let's go to, um, I don't know that you mentioned Sunday free. I didn't take that as a note. Didn't invite me and so into that.
Right. No, no, no. In fact, I do make comments on 12th about Sunday free. My, my main concern is what they, as it was, um, committed by the chief is that Sunday was the worst day from an impacted, impacted standpoint. So the, the most I'm gonna support there would be to make it free. But still enforced. Not because they could still force the two hours, still two hour parking, still whatever. The issue that I can see with that on Sundays though, is that if you're just going, if you're still going to enforce, that means you're not really enforcing the lots. The lots are free for, the lots, you're you could pay for up to 10 hours, what you're paying. So if, so that would mean that, that people at starting at eight p.m. Saturday night, all the way to either eight a.m. or 10 a.m. on Monday morning, depending on what we've, what we decide. You store your car in the store, your car in there because the lots, I, I, I do see that as a, as a, as a, as an issue. So same as I was earlier where I want to see what they, what my colleagues have to say about it and how this still wants to stand in its way. But having that one Sunday get said, you know, it was, if you just charge on Sundays, it is one thing, it's making our program different. There was differences in things that they're really picking a lot and wire somebody else does. So.
And again, if parking lots at six, uh, Simto Avenue, Huntington, R8 to eight, the two locations. And again, hearing CFO, just speaking for myself, and that rate, it's over a hundred thousand dollars. In, in the reserve charge for Sundays. Pro, the program is not paid for it's. So I don't know how I don't tell taxpayers that we're spending a hundred thousand dollars. So that's just, that's just ice in my face. Uh, others.
Question on, on that, um, that's one we're having to mention maybe to our enforcement without the meters, but without self-reporting at the meter, we have a way of knowing that somebody has exceeded the two hour. We keep it on shot tires. That's right. Readers.
Yeah. So the, the license plate reader system can facilitate timed based parking enforcement. It does so by reading the plate and it also picks up on the tire valve placement to see if the car has moved. At least it has, it allows a code to what hitting a ticket. Uh, it's not something that las is currently contracted to do. So there would be some exploration required there. We can change the things they enforce. So they may not have cost, but there's some, some work to be done there for them to do that.
Any comments? This is on the Sunday.
As far as Sundays, things. We always just different drivers, why aren't we? And you always have some rabbits, you know, I don't. And basically being that, like this burning business seems they know that. We have an 85, 85% amount of that's in our heads. They, they are looking at their, what we might pay.
So Sundays, I'm okay with it. I'd be in support of switching it free. So it's free when enforced, but that's already the last contract for them to work. Cause obviously now if they, if they're over there, if they're there or they exceeded time, then they get a ticket or they don't.
So essentially when we went to pay parking and replace the two hour requirement, the charter restriction is still codified, can be enforced. But because the meters only allow you to pay for two hours, we cite for not paying for parking, not for being there in excess of two hours. So it'd be a shift in that enforcement posture. Let me clear that it would erase that a hundred thousand dollars of revenue to move to free and instead to enforce the two hour limits in the street. And then now we've moved to a 10 hour limit in the lots for really to know. Does that answer your question, Mr. Mayor? I believe it does. Any other comments or problems on Sundays? Mr. Mayor, if I may, just briefly, there's something that has taught a couple of times that I think I wanted to make sure that I commented on. If there's discussion of keeping the codes the same and simply not conducting enforcement during periods of time as a means of essentially getting around the policy change, as your SME, I would discourage that behavior. It's a bad practice because you're gonna suddenly hear from the patron that does want to enforce. And the answer they're gonna give is that we know the law says that's illegal, but we're not doing anything about it. So if there's a desire to change times, days, with all due respect, we should get a policy decision, not a, let's not change it, let's just not give tickets. Does that make sense?
Yes. Anything else, um, on Sundays?
I just wanna clarify, um, if we were to change the, uh, shorten the, the time for the parking lot, we have enforcement for Sunday. We, we will eliminate parking on Sunday. And on number three also says exempt Sunday from parking enforcement. I'm just trying to understand if, if we were to keep the parking enforcement on a Sunday, but then we're eliminating Sunday to be free. So how are the two coincide with, with enforcement? How, how does, how does extending Sunday from parking enforcement if, we'll, we'll take it back if we are removing Sunday? If, if it's going to be free?
Yeah, I think there, those two terms are being used for interchange in the here in the report to say that when we say that we would exempt from enforcement, it essentially means we'd exempt from the need to pay. And that's probably a mistake in the, the wording used in that. There, there, as I said just previously, there would be no recommendation from this staff ever to simply not enforce something that's codified. So when we say to exempt Sundays from enforcement, I think it's this concern that council has brought several times of basically exempting Sundays from the paid parking program.
Yeah, that's where.
And so, uh, Sunday's free.
I'm, I'm in favor of Sundays free with endorsement. Sunday's conversion salary. So that plan was your, your problem still exists at Sunday. So not enforcing it Sunday, only gonna make that problem back. If, if we're enforcing, it kind of alleviates it a little bit, I imagine, but, uh, if it's to the tune of a hundred dollars to help with your performance or any greedy cash, I don't know how I can support losing that unless it was coupled with some other way to try to improve that in a state. And I know, I think we're all pretty happy about keeping the rates as low as, as we could from the very beginning. Uh, we were all, you know, agreeing. So let's keep it as low as we can so, so that we're not losing money. I think this now puts us at a point where we need to be found that, that floor is. And so I, I, I can't support it unless we know what, what that whole change is gonna look like. So I'm gonna say it all in there. And then I'm
Yeah, it's just, where do you make it up? I mean, how do we go into a deficit at more? And I, I just, as we have a budget coming up. And so in essence, uh, you know, I, I know on Sundays and it's like, uh, we have three churches and don't have any parking. It's, it's common. And residents, I know I've gone after a council meeting at 10:30 at night, I build behind Mexican quotas. And it's like, there's 30 something hours there. So it's utilized. I know it's different, but that's what I've been concerned about is that now, but anyway.
Sir, yeah, just, just to address that, it's important to me, she this is, this is, we need to do, we need to identify these dirty things, what to do and that helps make it all free. The email. Six thousand. For recollection, I think I'm making a we, we have to figure out, is it normal? Customers had a free, or the employees, or businesses? It wasn't gonna be agreement. We were trying to figure out what's the best way to make this a success again, before we knew we were gonna have all the problems. Right? And we need to do our best to responsibly try to get this as zero sum as possible. The idea that they, we offer that, if that was, that was so we have to start changes. There can be more changes. You gotta go and you're only that out for three months. Business is gonna say the car is empty. Can you, at least in the parking lots? On the streets, they won't move. I've been in the parking lots, they didn't. And they're gonna say there's not any parking on the street. So I think, I think that's the next discussion as we go through here, figure out which the things that we think we can do. And it's gonna take additional analysis. Right? Cause that's what I, this is why I wanted to, it's, it's gonna take additional time. And we could have gone.
This craving would have been to have an ad hoc committee appointed and then go forward. So and as we've already got a second report, you know, there's not the resource. Um, but I think what you're hearing from council or member sounds are eyes. I think it's, it's a nice gesture that when people like that having to pay for it. And I, because we don't have that answer, that's kind of where I'm having the concern. But, but I, I get a little bit of you. Yes. Somebody need to talk? No, no, you need to talk. No, sorry. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, just really quickly and this is where I need to push a little bit, uh, cause I'll feel bad if I don't get this right. Um, I'm really struggling to understand what problem are we solving by waiving parking fees on Sunday? What problem are we fixing? Cause we fixed the problem. It's this where 85% turnover is happening when Sundays were so bad. I'm struggling to understand the logic of why we're, why we would do this given the hundred thousand dollar shortfalls. And then I just need to make, I sort of need to make, make that statement very, very clear. I know one business owner here mentioned Sundays was, was bad for her. I understand that, but what evidence do we have for that? What evidence do we have as long as this is struggling because we charge for parking on Sundays? I, I, I don't know of any evidence firsthand.
So I see that it's not necessarily a logical thing. This is one of those things where we're the only city that's charging for parking on Sunday. And it's, it's, it's a sad, it's a sad reality. And I don't know how other cities are dealing with their parking on Sunday, just by having this, don't free parts of which one street, unfortunately, nothing. I think those states are doing worse, but it's so, the you know, I, I agree. I said in the, I said in the last meeting that I was, I was very concerned about making Sundays free. Because of all the issues that we, that were, just said, and I didn't go into the, the, into the revenue piece, which obviously is a massive issue as well. Um, and I, I said the same thing that, that council member Medina, just Vice Mayor Medina just said about, uh, my thinking that, 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 that the folks who are in favor of it, especially folks who are P downtown would come back after a few months and say, yeah, that's, that's a terrible idea. So because of, because again, it's the worst day. So again, we have, we have all kinds of I swear I didn't go over my time. It's time to go.
Uh, Chinese.
No, it's very funny. I think it's the hottest she's been electric, it's a lot of party. I think that's a solid eighty to a hundred thousand.
So, so, no, 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 I, I absolutely get your point back. And, and if I can, we don't know that the other cities have had the same intensity problems of parking on Sundays that we have. We have evidence on our Sundays. And we know our problem here. I can't tell, I don't know what really is probably here. But we knew we had a problem on Sundays. You guys set a policy to address it and it worked. We were successful. And I just want to make sure we understand we had success on Sundays fixing a problem. And I just kind of, I, I've spoken to all of you guys privately about this. I just wanted to make my statement publicly as well. So I know I don't have a vote very thorough. So, you know, and, and I appreciate the dialogue too, because right now I'm appearing as cool because they, uh, that's, that's a miriam. It's because that's, that's, that's else. That's what we're doing. So, Sharon, what else?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
I just want to respond to, um, the city manager. I know that we always talk about revenue. Um, but I also think that everybody deserves a break. I mean, we work Monday through Friday. We, we take a break to Sunday and Sunday. And I, and I think if we give the, the residents, like our community a break for one day, I think they will all appreciate it. And, and at some point in the next fiscal year, we will develop something that will generate revenue. But for now, I think we have to listen to the community and what they are asking from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. There's a majority to have Sundays looked into. Uh, I want to make sure that, so Sundays looked into to be free, doesn't mean it's free this Sunday. I'm being very, very clear because that'll be the first thing. Or how am I gonna take it? Um, but I, I also believe there is that element. I have to be responsible about, okay, the revenue. Uh, but I think that's what you were saying is like, okay, there's 80,000 characters, a hundred thousand characters. So we're subsidizing a hundred eighty thousand dollars for parking at this moment. We're still having more to go. So, um, I think what I've kind of here is, let's see what it looks like. See what we can do to modify something. Does the price grow up on San Mateo Avenue? I don't know. Uh, I forgot, it's a pity does too. That's, that's something else, which I don't believe all the other. So to go to the argument, oh, they don't. So why are we, but, but again, we were trying to be, you know, not, not emotional, but, uh, down a driven bar. Did you?
I'm just briefly, Mr. Mayor, not to beat the horse anymore than it has been sort of beaten, but then I, I just want to caution that I've, this idea of what other communities are or are not doing. We're basing this decision upon data and the problem the program was designed to resolve. As soon as you depart from that, I think you're potentially in a slippery slope, which by the recommendation of staff, to be clear, is not to touch Sundays. My ask, while I may be out of place requesting it, is for greater clarity here. Looking into Sundays is what staff has done. If what you want is for Sundays to be free, I think you need to say that. And then that can be what's done. I think the consequences of making Sunday free have been spelled out. It's about a hundred thousand dollars a year of lost revenue. And an increase of the problem the program was designed to resolve. So if the decision is to give Sundays for free regardless, which I would argue is simply because there are a few people. It is not accurate to say the community wants it free. There are a few people showing up asking for it to be free.
It is not accurate to say the community wants it free, there are a few people showing up asking for it to be free. And of course, people want things to be free and not pay for them. That's an easy place to stand. But I think staffing is clear direction with all due respect and to look into Sundays. I think that we have done that. Thank you. You're making this uh, last meeting, yeah. So thank you for your.
So, so the same. I know it's, I'll start on this one, because again, I think as of last meeting, I was a no on Sundays. And you pushed it to enter. Yes, all of them, because of the. When it's just going, so I'm not going to be the, I'm going to map just for for some days, because I do. Having the lots being on every set free for that period of time is gonna be a huge issue. Again, the revenue is a massive issue that's that is over here, but even putting that aside. That's why I made this concern is that is the. The impact, the um, the eighty five percent. So.
So for myself, I am this point to maintain the Sundays as is. Unless there could be a revenue generating to offset those dollars. Because it is over, it's actually. Thank you, learned four, so. Well, it's close. Uh, anyway, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying. So I'm clear. I'm dreaming as is until at least the known one gets paid for. Who else?
I pushed him on by question, why Sundays? What else is doing Sundays? Sundays are free everywhere um. And and I understand that this program as a whole does impact every business the same way. And depending what the the turnover rate is for your, your customer base. It it's, it's gonna work really well for some people, and I've heard that feedback as well, that some people really like it, they think it's very successful. Clearly, other people are are being heard by it and. Depending on the size of the transactions that that business does, I I can see where incrementally that parking um. The parking fee seems like a significant transaction cost for doing business, so absolutely get it. But we're seeing that there's still demand on Sundays, like like the chief just said, there's still demand on Sundays. It's being paid, it's hard to say, yeah, we need to get rid of it and then incur that additional cost, so. As much as I would like to see Sundays being free, I I just. I don't think it would be fiscally, fiscally responsible or contribute to. Uh, the benefit that the other businesses are having, so we, we have to weigh that as well. Say, I'm not spoiled. So supportive and we could buy. Think that we get that out. Thirty dollars was reasonable. Just below us, seven two counting down. Certainly, somewhere sixty. So who's the better? We go through the other. Series. Narrowed down, split us down. This point, I think based on. Problem we've had with this program. We need to get our business ready. Where is we do it? And we do increase the rates, I mean, so just playing this all involved. We haven't had a really big discussion about it, and this is, you know, it hurts, it's hard. Cause you're not gonna keep everybody happy. The people that are showing up, residents that are freaking out online, they're upset about it. Or somebody wants to pay more. I want more downtown than ever. There's also people, and we're gonna get to them, so many. Why can't we make a lot of in this program so bad? It's the only lots, it's not too hard, it's not too big, it's fair, you know, it's reasonable. When you go up and down the peninsula, hey, it's free on Sundays and. I think this is, I'm I'm. Good thing. Alright, time to. So two, yes, to the. Stand, my, my smirks comment, and I understand the whole concept of. You know, we go, let's, let's see if we can, let's see if we can address the revenue issue somewhere else within the program. Again, I think it's concerning. Even with enforcement, really, you don't enforce on the street, yeah, just lots. And it's gonna exacerbate the issue. Yeah, this isn't something that you can try easily. For the fall, this one, I think it changed all science.
Time, I'll stay at this time, and the Sunday will remain and we will move on. Uh, that will be on. And that was the two. Obviously, even if you were to get rid of or stop uh, with the meters or the kiosks. As we know, all of our community allows a two hour. So that means. They can get tickets, so that doesn't end that, so I just want to really be clear, because I think there would be that. Like, well, it's gonna go back to what it was, even park there twenty four seven. Uh, so anyway. Let's go ahead and uh. Sam, you are specific on the southern element and the northern that we'd like to see.
Yes, so I was pleased, my, my proposal was to. Keep the, keep the kiosk. Still be enforced for the two hours. It's a benefit, we could also then reuse those kiosks for a place.
And what words just proposed is that, I don't know, maybe for you, right, yeah, is that clear when? Territory we're referencing. If I'm understanding correctly, Mr. Mayor, we're saying everything north of San Mateo Avenue. El Camino is being proposed to be living, then no pay parking.
Yes, but still, of course, two hours, that's, it's always been there.
Understood it, and I also want to mention this, because I need to do some research, make sure, right, it's been quite some time. But I think you may recall that when we were two hour enforced on El Camino, one of the things we had a significant community problem with was the proliferation of the. Food vendors, food trucks, because there's an issue with enforcing the two hour parking restriction on those commercial vehicles. And the time parking has made that much less of an issue, because they have to pay and they can only pay for up to two hours, even with their commercial. So it just may be something to make sure we consider that that problem might resurface that. We're talking about years ago, this was a very big problem, we talked about many, many times, we had twenty different food trucks up and down El Camino Real. And I'm a little bit concerned about that if we move to just the two hour, otherwise I'm clear, most proposals. Thank you. Focus.
Great, that could happen, I, I would anticipate. That would, that was currently in place, do we think it's gonna make the parking issue worse, better, or maybe it's that?
I think it's a little bit difficult to say, but the discussion was that we're uh. While, while we're charging for parking, we're eliminating potential parking spaces on El Camino for the residents of large development down my case. And then that may push more of them into the neighborhoods, we're already concerned about the impact of very few parking spaces for a very large complex. Uh, however, to Councilmember Hamilton's point, if you're enforcing the two hour. That that wouldn't be a problem, they actually can't go out on El Camino. And then it came up, it was, is that a worse problem that? Uh, no one can now park in El Camino, and that pushes traffic into the neighborhood. So we don't actually really know, which is one of the staff recommendations, maybe we wait and see what the impact of those developments is. Um, because otherwise it's all speculation, what it's gonna cost. By the way, the numbers are not significant, right? The immediate space in front of that complex may add. You know, I think we counted eight or ten parking spaces, which is not gonna exacerbate the, or is not gonna alleviate the issue of hundreds of residents that stop parking.
Okay, so. That would have given them out, there's been commercial in. And then down, also creating a very short. The pro parking.
That in a prior previously. Parking ordinance, if there is an exception in the uh, the act that allows you to participate.
Make sure. How, similarly effect.
Right, and um. We have inventory, but also this time. Gonna go um, with the. As the city, my uh, Mr. Hamilton, and I just think it's very. Kind of stretches, the revenue is very minor. Uh, and so, but however, there still is performance of that, that's not changing, just as it is, is where it's sitting. Okay, let's move to eight to ten, eight to ten. Uh, so Mr. Hamilton has asked, or is that important, is that? Currently, it is from eight to six in the lots, it is from eight to eight on Huntington and on. Uh, Semteau Avenue. And now you're saying eight to ten, meaning free everywhere, or?
Would the life purpose was to begin parking enforcement in ten. And work everywhere, yeah. Change that intending. Think by, I think by. Having those times be different in the lots on both ends of the scale, I think. Step too far for, step too far. Being to the eight to ten, there'd be a lot of stickers outside.
Just to be clear, because I think we had this issue earlier, you said enforcement, we're actually talking about changing the hours for firing pay.
Exactly, because one of the other, yeah, and yeah, all of it, so yeah, so the, the, the uh. Cause of one of the other, one of the other. Potential, potential things that could happen here, so that might sh- shorten. Ships. Make some savings. You know, my chance, there might be in cost savings.
Uh, my best assessment would be to say immediately, probably yes, because we're currently paying people that are out there giving enforcement. Um, during that time. I don't even recall that the overall project here was for enhanced citywide parking enforcement. And the aim was that you're seeing this saturation of las downtown to attempt to indoctrinate the community to the new system. And the goal was always to move them out, and we have a lot of other enforcement issues to be addressing around the community, so. I would hope that we would redeploy them elsewhere to handle those issues, and which we know not the savings, but. Regroup.
So thank you for that, but the the overall purpose is not that, and he goes on this. Side effect, I think, in the history, they were seeing is that, right? You know, right, go downtown, between those hours, there's plenty, you know, there's not, there's probably, put another word on it. We need to deal, try to get.
Many, 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 many of this.
So it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me to. I did some research, uh. Only fourteen are open, forty, eighteen are open. Ten, so twenty percent of the stores downtown are not. Six percent open and keep, so I'm starting with. Uh, I think that there are some savings to the park. Enforcement expense expenditures, and that frees up las to go do the other enforcement that. Is, that should be charged to whatever. Shouldn't be charged to the part that downtown paid of this contract. The. You see about this figure here, I'm in page thirty one. Savings to the program that they're not working to revenue, something else. Is that fair, there, assumption?
Thanks, I, we didn't, when this program was being put together and and presented to you all, it was, it was never presented as like the downtown. Program and the program at large, it it was one program cohesive. There's a potential sticking point with that philosophy, which I would say that. Then potentially you need to be splitting the revenue generated by all of these tickets. And the tickets not issued for paid parking violations would not go into the parking fund either. So I'm not sure there would need to be a much more robust analysis of what that looks like over time. Um, but I think that if you're gonna, you know, suggest that enforcement outside of downtown shouldn't be paid for. Through the downtown parking funds that houses this project, that enforcement dollars also uh, go there. So there's gonna be probably a bit of a trade off there.
So understood. Some one of our. Well, we, we. Comes in and says, thinking about. You know, we're seeing to make sure it's, it's, it's right, that will. What do you call it, when they come in, they think, the audit, when the auditor comes in, it's like, hey, wait a second. Those, that contract is including that, to make sure the money goes where it should be going. So um, I've said enough about it, I think it's, it's. Starts to trickle in around ten o'clock, and then by then, you, your data would, would tell us. It's. Okay. So I'm sorry, not paying, not.
There you go, uh, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the uh, the audit, auditor who's in. Does the audit. My account, then they. Divide them, the, the monies in the two subjects, anyway. If I can, the. If I can, the audit, specifically, but you're talking about more pure accounting. Keep in mind, if the program is being subsidized by the general fund, because the general fund, it doesn't matter. The general fund is still paying. So, just to be clear, so savings per city to the general fund. If the general fund is subsidized to the parking fund, right?
Right, right. If they were ever to do a rest in the parking program, the general fund would make that. That.
There.
Comment on this.
Open, well.
If you're looking at this as a cost saving measure. Hey, I would be in favor of looking at ways cutting costs. It would actually save us. There. Supposed to just assignage. And potentially. Some loss in revenue. I went to the, the train morning, and I, I see very few cars, and I do see cars in San Mateo Avenue. And I don't know, I don't pay attention to the lots that close, I imagine there's some cars in there as well. So, there is. For making any change, any potential loss of revenue. Um, but not clear what the savings would be, if it would be even enough to offset. So, um. And I mean, it sounds like a good idea and concept, but I don't think there's enough data to be to say, yeah, that's, that's gonna. So, um. I, I mean, it's, I saw there was like some hesitation from staff in terms of saying, yeah, there's definitely savings. I do see last people out there, morning, got their empty coins out of the, the machine, so they're, they're doing stuff, and they still have to keep doing. So, um. I mean. And I, I don't know that there's, unless, I mean, the merchants are asking for more free parking, so they could park for free. But I mean, they're supposed to be in the lots anyway, so I don't know, the street parking is a major concern, how the, the merchants down there. Kind of, it's like.
I was trying to, like, I tend, and I guess, and I understand based on what you see, so I drive San Mateo Avenue. At least three, uh, times a week, sometimes four, and usually it's between seven thirty and eight thirty. And, um, I'll be down there, so I do see what you're saying, I'm not so much to the lots, but I mean, like, why not, if we're just throwing out. Time, why not nine AM, where we are, streets sweeping, so there's continuity and consistency. So, that's, you know, I'm trying to wrap around where, where the need and the ask has, has come.
Through the chairman, if, if it helps, the, the, the ten o'clock number came from looking at the data that was presented to us on twelve, because that's what it really shows, but the. You mean? Yeah. And I, I don't need, like, an hour, an hour, you don't need to. Unmanage that, to that eighty-five percent number, before then, the number for showing.
Senator, I don't get my money's worth, I guess, if I'm asking you, um, but both your comment and those of Councilmember Salz are, is probably why staff's recommendation, there's for a little bit more time, there's unintended consequences. One that occurred to me as you're speaking is, we currently start, one of the reasons we start early for the enforcement and the paid parking in the lots is to get overnight parkers. Recall that we wanted to allow residents to park in the lots overnight, to clear out before that parking is needed by businesses. I don't know, Vice Mayor Medina, in your survey of the businesses that are open early, but one that comes to mind is Vexcom Produce, and. If, if that, if they open early enough, that lot in particular is heavily utilized by residents. That will now not have to leave until ten AM, which means there will be no enforcement, potentially that lot being severely impacted for their business. So, that, it's just maybe one example of why this is relatively new. In your defense, you probably thought that what we were doing in our last several weeks was this type of analysis to bring to you, but we didn't. And it, it feels like you probably deserve to have some of that information, so there's not some unintended consequence that's hard to walk back. These changes are very hard to walk back. If you reduce the hours that you're charging and that you want to re-increase them, it will not be popular. Uh, just like starting low and increasing rates is difficult for us to palette, because it will not be popular. So, just if there's any room here for some time for staff to come back to you with at least some analysis of those unintended consequences, it would probably be the lots.
And, and the only reason I'm running up the street is because we know how it is. Maybe it's to a time like. If I had to park in the street. I would then be in the lots, like, I'm then attending it. To not have to worry about parking during a street sweeping area. So, we know how it is, so.
Want to come down there. Streets sweeping.
Right.
True.
Is, in this war. Street ban. So, if there's, it's gonna be a couple of weeks, or is it? We haven't been talking about scheduling, right? We just, it's about seeing. Council center, so it's probably gonna take a lot to, to do any of it, because we've got to sign, and everything. Oh.
Sorry.
Senator, you now have. Direction of where you need to.
Yes, ma'am. We're trying to narrow down the list of the changes, and I agree with Chief Ryan, uh, with the concept of why we start A to A, and I would. I, I, I would be inclined to keep that A to A schedule.
So, keep A to A, uh, three, eight, ten, three, eight, ten.
So. Now, like, how Councilmember Hamilton, it's two, two. And so, I, for me, I think we do need to have. I can see the reason for doing it. Because when I am down there, it is not. You know, it's not crowded, candidate. And I don't mean that negatively, but it's just like, Vice Mayor said, based on the businesses. But I do wanna, uh. I want to go to the chief's point is, the concern is, once you do it. To come back and say, you know what? We learned a lesson, and we're gonna go back. I think that's what challenges. I know Vice Mayor is saying, well, maybe we can still look into that. And then see if that's a wild. Thing. So, at, at this point, until, I'm gonna take your advice, maybe it's your last meeting, um, and say that I'd like, I, I need one down to. That's all. Okay. See, away signage.
Okay. Well. My point here was that there's no. There's no signage that I'm aware of. That lets people know that being in the lots is cheaper. You know, you're on the avenue. Like, times five, I think that parking downtown is a dollar fifty an hour. And I didn't, I, if. The most didn't tell me. I would have no idea that I could park for two hours.
True.
My staff's opinion is for how to. And I have signage, you know, on, on the kiosks, on signs, whatever, I don't know. I don't know. That's better, similarly, and many people know. That. Just because they exist, because they're cheaper. Because that was one of the. Backing principles of this program. Was to. Stand. Stand, I don't know, street. You know. Such a huge thing. So. Is that a difficult? Takes time. Takes resource. It takes adding something. Obviously not replacing inside of it. But is that? Anything that you'd have a, your suggestion as a strand, and comes around to?
The, my only comment would be, and I'm just going to make off my whole life experience, I don't know that I've ever seen a sign that points to be in any city to cheaper parking or less. To my knowledge, and I maybe just don't know. Sure. But it's something I'm not familiar with, and somebody made a comment earlier about. If you're gonna have a sign that's gonna have a lot of detail on it for any kind of information, and that signs have to be pretty big. So, that we want really big signs in our downtown. And there is the false cider pollution that we just want to be mindful of. And, or is there another way of getting the word across, just experientially, like, oh, I paid at the theater here, but it says I had gone down the street. I could have been for next week, or not, for you, excuse me, or cheaper, for next, thank you. And, again, I'm just going off of my own, just the experience in life, and I just don't recall ever seeing a hung sign that says, oh, wait. Over here, cheaper parking. And then I think again, somebody commented on, how big is that sign gonna get, to be able to get that message across to the equal. Hey, so, I don't know the answer to those questions, but it's just something I think I should prepare greater for.
Pulling from Chief's old presentation.
Excuse me.
Yeah. I think working with the merchants and having the merchants also let them, or, and, and. It's, but. I guess, people aren't thinking about it, they go, really want, if they get, they come out. Seat, it can be printed out, that is cheaper. See now, in the stores, it can mention that it is from the lots. We don't apply, but there's. How we could. Geo coding, with private, your cemetery, just to. Is it cheaper for lots? We go. All of us still do enough there. Because I think one of our business owners just lynching that, you know, it's. The one that led. That's been that, it's expensive, and it's like, it's two, adult, two hour, I don't know how long it takes to do nails. Um, but, I think, we're, I don't know, two hours, I don't know, but you know.
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes. So, you can go on the parking lot and get it done for it all. I think we go, pay dollars, set it on the street. It's more twenty minutes, seventy-five cents, so you're gonna get a ticket, a lot, and then letting your customers know, and these have to. You know, encourage and provide signage or flyers, some. And, yeah, I'm okay with, I'm okay with. Going.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager, for that information. Regarding to the way signage.
So, still. Yeah, and, and I do realize. It's the bigger way finding signage thing, so I think it's kind of got out in between, which, for three years, I've been talking about it. And having some nice way of buying signage, which is in the, or. I guess you might have that, talk about the budget. We can do. Like, it. Street signage is hard. The keys are kind of small, but I think by design, so they're not so big. And we can figure out where those other keys. As you're approaching, they can be modified. It would be nice to look into that, as though.
Can I, if I can just clarify my ask, because again, I think, as was just stated, this is getting kind of conflated with the way of finding signage, so the need that sounds like I'm seeking for signs. I was asking for, and what I'm asking for is trying to figure out a way that we can educate the public. Because, you know, like I said, folks on Facebook isn't. So. Even if that's. But, like, putting something on the meter, putting something on the, the language as you're going through the meter. And if this meter happens to be on the street, just letting them know that, hey, by the way, this will have been cheaper if you parked in the lot. And then maybe, as Council, as Vice Mayor, uh, the dean has stated. Pretty good. Signs or flyers that we can distribute to the businesses and make them express, for the state, and if you can street, you could eventually run lots. Just to try to do that education, that's really what I'm asking for, because I know that the wayfinding signage project is a much bigger project. We can try and stress this as part of the. Yeah, Vice Mayor, stop, can probably save some time here, because I would imagine that council would also support a, a robust public outreach campaign fixated on. Making it clear that parking in the lots is at a discounted rate. That, that is something that we have other components of this parking program, and that direction would be. Um, separate from the wayfinding signage questions, as we're adding a fourteen, but that's, that's. It's work, but it's not a huge ordeal, and all the things you mentioned are easy for us to look into. Can we print it on the receipt? Can we put a sign on the kiosk saying, hey, did you know that it's cheaper to park in lots? Can we use similar signage for businesses? All those are yeses. Can we do a PSA video like we've done on other pieces and post it on the site? Yes. We don't have anything to your point, Councilmember Hamilton, on the parking page on the website that says it's cheaper to park in the lots. If you look at the rate structure, it shows you, but there's nothing saying, did you know? So, i- if, if that's the desire here is to turn the focus, how can we get better awareness of the cheaper parking in the lots? That's pretty easy for us to do. Thank you.
Any other feedback from? Yeah, I, I was sincere, having some more information. But, well, again, not necessarily the size, I think I agree with the speaker, is that there's, the signs are already pretty busy. That, well. Uh, I would suggest maybe we pour it to the lots, or a lot of them, pardon, versus the cheaper parks, can't people understand that there's also that capacity, so. Right, going down the lane, long term, not, short term, but, so, uh, it's clear that that's instead of, I don't, cheaper, also. Stay.
Consider is, where do we actually. Place the, the signage strategically, where it's, it's visible to the developer. I, I drove by. Many times, I think we have enough signage, but it's just not visible. Some of them are not visible. Where we have our parking lot next to the Chinese restaurant, um, it's, if, if they're turning to. I forget the, the Chinese restaurant in one of our parking lots, um, it's covered by the tree, and I do not see it, like, while driving, because you're looking for a signage. So, I think we just need to study them carefully and strategically place them more visible.
So, I think Councilmember Hamilton gave clarity, and the chief already said, education, that, that, that is part. From what we were.
Bring it, bring it, I wrote it down, really great. So, my, my suggestion here, when we were looking at. When we talked about the. On the twelve, when we talked about trying to come up with options for shorter. Term parking in the lots. Um, I have a suggestion that you could place in the car for them, when they're still looking in the lot, behind Mexico, you know, just that we have. Don't necessarily need two hours apart. Bank. Twenty, twenty-five minutes, whatever, the, whatever the appropriate number is. For sure. And, I think, the, 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 that is green, it's the same shade as green, that's obvious, this is where you can, pretty spot. Um, not just in every space. That's, uh, this, uh, this is. I think, I'll just say.
Yeah, I see you mentioned, see, I completely forgot about that piece, and it, it does sound, at least at the surface, like a viable, uh, replacement for individual meters at each space. There would still be the operating question here of whether it's cash only, and can the kiosk facilitate a particular transaction type, meaning a twenty-minute or twenty-four-minute purchase for a green zone? That is only purchasable via cash, noting that if you allow the card to use for that transaction, it's gonna be subsidizing that parking if you maintain the rate structure of the lots. Right, because we, if, and if you're gonna set it the way the rate is on the streets, which is seventy-five cents for twenty minutes. I think the thumbnail argument that comes up is, would you rather have two hours for a dollar or twenty minutes for seventy-five cents? So, so if you're gonna keep the rate structure of a dollar for two hours and offer a twenty-minute purchase price. I don't even know what that comes out to, but it would have to be cash only, or it would be subsidized for.
Yeah, you know, the, the only way it makes any sense is it would be fifty cents, and it would have to be, and it would have to be. Cash only, and. So, it would be. So, right now, we have a cash only option for seventy-five cents on the street, correct?
Uh, I believe you can pay the seventy-five cents if not pay cash.
Oh, yes.
And that's why I said it's seventy-five, because the highest transaction on somewhere in that fifty cents range that they paid that transaction, so it was making sure at least it wasn't a, a loss. I I would still say again, like the question here is, let's say it is fifty cents. If I'm going to pay fifty cents for twenty four minutes and run the risk of getting a fifty five dollar ticket. I I would rather pay the extra fifty cents a dollar. Now I have two full hours. I'm not going to get a ticket. So it comes down to that rate structure.
Right. Yeah, what I want to try and get after here is one of the. One of the most. Like I said, that was quite a lot. We've had, we've had this discussion, had a lot of skirmish. It's about the why? Why? It does make sense, but that's not just perception. It's and it makes the main curve. So. I would be okay to amend my. Ask to be, can we, can we just look at the, look at the the options within the software to see? Would there be an option where this kiosk is only taking coins and you put in fifty cents for twenty minutes?
It's an option. To where you're paying cash, paying cash. But if you wanted to pay. Your card, you're paying more for the pace of transaction cost. You're paying for the transaction cost. It's what this. I'm going to hurt that answer or have asked that in that way. If I go in there, it's twenty five cents for thirty minutes, twenty minutes, whatever it is. I got a order, bang, I take the chance to get the ticket if I take more than thirty minutes. But I know today, next week, a tomato and a garlic and it's profit. The ten and out, bang, bang. It's right there. Oh, man, I don't want the order. Um, I'm going to pull my credit card out. Well, for me, I walk, but I I know what I'm doing. You got the order, make sure those orders in your in your car, maybe run in, run in real quick and and. You'll be done. So you're going to take a chance. But the question, the legal question is. If it's set up to pay you a order and if you have a order, you're in now. Don't worry about the transaction fee. Could that just be convenience? Because it's in a credit card, you're going to pay for it. You have to go into a park. Or a dollar and get two hours. So it's up to you, you know, pay pay with the order and then there's no transaction fee. And so it's actually costs benefit to us. Here to subsidize it.
So there are a lot of cities pass the transaction fees along to the consumer and you pay for parking with the card. So I can't imagine there's a legal concern with doing that. I think that it's a broader policy question because I don't think I look into it. That the system will allow us to do that for only some transactions and not for others. I think it'll be a system wide setting that says for every credit card transaction, apply X B. Uh, not only in the case that they're paying for short terms. So we would need to get you some more information, but I don't think there's any legal concern with if council's directions to begin. Passing transaction fees on the consumer, which from my experience is the more common practice in these programs. It could potentially alleviate a number of transaction cost concerns.
Right. So you.
I I was just going to say, uh, Mayor, that um. When there is, there are provisions that the government codes how you pass on transaction convenient credit card fees. And we just have followed that process and and make sure it applies here.
Um, questions for us?
Sure, uh, the um. If you work. Go down the round, pass it down those fees. I I think that may actually eliminate. Have my special green, you know, because then it'd lower the. These across the board and maybe not meet special meters. Do you think maybe to that? Yeah. So I mean, I I like the idea of looking at that. I think from the last report, most of the transactions are flash picks transactions, right? They have the car base, the car base. So, um, yeah, we end up hurting. Good, good, good. Right, going back now. And and so for clarification, Councilmember Hamilton, it would be, he said, a cluster of green zones with their own. And what if they build a whole stretch? Where where would they be clustered? Every one, one area?
I have a thought. I'm thinking. I think it would make the most sense to try this out in the in the lot of high Mexico. In the lot. Yeah, this is all, this is all about the lot. It's not not the street. And none of what I'm talking about here would be on the street. It's all the. Because we, you know, we did, we did figure out. A shorter option for the street. Shorter option for the lot. And you can, you know, so if you don't want to pay a dollar, you can pay seventy five cents out on the street. There's much less for me and. So. Need areas, give people an option where they can. It's not, it's all. And what you still got, I think you're still getting to hear us. Such a. Each. Why not? Very popular.
And I guess we could use one of the kiosks on.
Same idea was for.
And it's obviously. So there's also that, but sure, the uh. For several, we heard all kinds, there's all kinds of options. There's all kinds of places there and not one lot that are, you know, the two hours. Right, setting to two hours. Then go later. True.
Saying. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So is the idea going to be one green zone per in in all our parking lot? Or we're going to do a trial on just one, one parking? I think I'm not there enough.
Eight lot, eight.
May I ask which lot?
In three.
I always forget the numbers.
Definitely not one.
No, I meant one lot. You gave me six hours.
Oh.
There's a lot of me referring to 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 do the trial. And behind next to.
Don't do. I think that is three. And it it just probably merits mentioning here as well, city manager's comment in mind that. Having someone to oversee. These policy decisions, probably not a F team, but someone who this is what they're focused on is important because the first thing that occurs to me is if we do this with no process. For how you assess where these should go in the future, what precedent might you be setting? When fifteen businesses come forward to us in the weeks after you deploy this program and say, well, I want the same thing. I have the same need. If we don't have a process to assess those, determine what the criteria are to put them in. It could be a difficult thing to keep control of. So just maybe at least some broader discussion about what that might look like. Uh, for transparency to the community. So doesn't feel like we're picking and choosing where these things go in. Um, and so that you get a competent analysis of the impacts. I think.
With that, thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Hamilton, was there any, was there other stuff that I missed from your?
See compensation from T two for.
Thank you, thank you.
Please. Uh, now I did have compensation. I just forgot what it was for. So. Uh, I think that's something more for uh legal. Attorney, uh. And and you're asking us to have a discussion. Uh, very much.
I don't know if it's feasible for us to seek compensation for T two for all the, for all of the. Lots of it was true because. We, I only did we spend, expand a ridiculous amount of staff tonight. Chasing our tails on a problem that turned out to be buried in the software. That's how long I'm trying to be accurate. That's accurate. It was a firmware issue that caused the. The kiosks to not go into sleep mode. So they burned out their power tonight. What that caused for, when when we deployed this program. The night we voted on it, gave my little speech. And I said, nobody, nobody likes to pay for parking. Nobody thinks about, nobody thinks twice about paying for parking in Birmingham. Very first day that they paid parking, every single person drove up, saw them theater and went. Because no one likes to do. So there's always going to be that pushback period, that honeymoon. It's what the opposite of a honeymoon period where people are, people are like.
Baby.
Baby moon, there you go. So. And we didn't. We didn't get that. Because the meters were messed up. So we're just exacerbating that. And we didn't get the people coming out of that. And that's, it was incredibly damaging to us. And it's, that wasn't her fault. That wasn't the fault of staff. That wasn't the fault of us making bad decisions up there. It wasn't last's fault. It was D two giving us had kiosks. And we. We have to at least look at, can we get some relief for them? That's, that's my point.
Okay, and then I'm, I appreciate your comments. I'm going to. I'm going to keep it with the city attorney because I think it goes into contract. It goes to other elements that I don't know that we should be discussing enough at. At this level uh for direction on that uh city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Hamilton. I can. Get with the police chief, figure out the facts here and, you know, I think provides you. With a response of, you know, what potential cause of action, if we have any uh current kind of privilege come communication and uh follow up.
Yeah, the the ask here was not to have a public discussion. Was to make sure. So with that from the attorney in the past, we have no further discussion on compensation uh element. We'll have a uh information call. Um.
Kennedy God. Oh, yes, but that's going to have council action. Thank you. Shortening part of this. Miss, Mr. Vice Mayor, um, just make sure that that has.
Kiosks. And then. To me, the parking intervals, which is really a separate subject. Because you're talking about all the rest of the lots. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, if you have, you know, I'm shooting over there. There's no evidence of someone else to expose me tonight. I just tell them on you first. Well, I just want to make sure we covered Tom, uh, sorry, Councilmember Hamilton. And if if I've got, yes, we have, then I will. To the vice baroncy, if there's anything that was left off.
So after that, after this discussion, we've come to. This. Possibility of looking at shorting, um, shorting the time interval. Because one of the reasons why we couldn't do that was the task for. We can't reduce it. But then we started talking about the green kiosks and it's like, well, maybe we could reduce it provided that we're allowing the. Card user to pay for it. So the only one item on the whole list there is short, shorting shortened parking intervals in parks. Definitely. Right? So. I heard previously was that uh they buy it because it relates to that we're subsidizing that cost. But if we could capture that cost to the consumer. And somebody could not only in the green zone, they could pay whatever. Right, or amount it is for. Is it two hundred cents, right? Whereas if somebody shows up at um. Five twenty five, right, that fifteen minutes ago, and they're like, I gotta pay a dollar. Well, I want to get paid for it. Be here. Fifteen minutes, well, they can pay for. Makes sense.
Yes, in fact, I. I would say that we're actually all only talking about shorter intervals in the lots. The question is at what scope? Is it available everywhere or only in certain spaces? I'd caution us not to use green zones because. Technically, in the current adopt policy, there's no charge to park in the green zones, which are twenty four minute zones by code. Um, down on the avenue itself. So what we're actually talking about, to your point, is short interval. And the question is on on what scale? Is it only in isolated spaces or across the entire platform? I would also remind you that it wasn't just a fiscal potential fallout here. So let's see here is to drive in all of the previously adopted reports. Longer term parkers into the lots, shorter term parkers on the streets. And so doesn't mean we can't do this, but it it probably is a little bit counter to that philosophy.
Fair. So. Kiosks, we talked, we just finished talking about that, but we never went to number one. Talking about that. So in that broader discussion of data to see if it's possible, I would, I'm going to. About that.
Think, so. I think you're combining the two into, you're asking for more information from staff on what the potentialities are for shorter term parking intervals in the lots. Be that broadly for any spot in the lots or for isolated. Said not to use term for green zones, right? Designated spaces for shorter. But that, what I'm hearing is you'd like information on what's possible there. Um, to accommodate the ultimate objective of providing. Short term options for people who want to run quick errands in a place like Mexico Produce where it makes more sense to be in a lot than on the street.
Got it. And and the other scenario where it's five forty five and I don't guess that one.
Which I do think we accommodated after the last, we changed the intervals towards the termination point of the day so that they're, you're only. We stop charging at some point period, like we're giving a free grace at the end of the day in the lots. And then there's a point at which there is a discounted rate because this was brought up before. I need to confirm that with the program, but we took that on. Two meetings ago after it came up. Actually, it wasn't even in a meeting. It was a message that came in and said, this is a problem.
Yeah.
It was coupled with the paying in the morning before you park situation, allowing advanced payment.
I can confirm what I will be honest. When I have gotten to six o'clock meetings down the hall, then I get there at five fifty eight. Do this.
That's what I'm trying to, I will look into that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I do have a question. What is the difference if we? Were to change a key green kiosk to a shorter interval? And then looking into um changing the the uh. The setting to make it a short term, like twenty seventy five cents, uh seventy five, seventy five cents for twenty minutes. In our parking lot kiosk, wouldn't that be the same because we're giving them a shorter time? As opposed to the green kiosks as well?
Yes, I think the argument to be made is that that's not consistent with the rate structure in the lots. It's more expensive. So if we offer the same seventy five cents for twenty minutes I'm offering on the street. Then it's. Notably more expensive than the one dollar for two hours. And the question would be, why on earth would you pay seventy five cents and take a chance of getting a ticket when you get twenty minutes? Versus paying the dollar and getting two full hours of grace to park.
I I completely agree, um, but with, I guess the system uh would only take. Order or cash in the green kiosks. So the difference is if we have to change the shorter interval, it would accept credit card and cash, both payments.
Um. I think so is the only answer I could probably give you now. I think what you're asking is if we were. If we can limit the seventy five cent transaction on certain kiosks to only cash, meaning you can't use a card. Why couldn't we do that on all the kiosks? Is that what you're asking?
Ye- yes, because we're trying the the green, the green kiosk to be cash only. And are are we doing, I I I think my my question was, are we doing the same process? When we made the changes in the San Jose app? To the parking lot as well, same process on the payment?
So on that avenue, you you don't have. So on the avenue, you, you don't have to use coins to get the seventy-five cents for twenty minutes, you can use a card.
So that means we can also use the same form of payment in the parking lot. If we were to change the, the, the intervals.
Yeah, are you asking, can we offer the seventy-five cents for twenty minutes in the parking lots? And allow credit card payments just like we do on the street? The answer to that question is yes, we can. Again, my contention would be why on earth would you pay seventy-five cents for twenty minutes if you get two hours for it all?
Yeah, but that's what we are discussing to shorten the parking intervals in the parking lot, uh, you will look into that.
But the discussion there has been fifty cents, I mean roughly, it's just discussion with fifty cents for twenty minutes in cash only. And then if we allow cards passing transaction fees along to the consumer. All that requires some significant staff analysis to come back to on, as was mentioned on the city attorney, even on the legal side.
I think it's, since right now it's two dollars, one dollar for two hours. If you do the math, I think it's twenty-five cents for thirty minutes, I mean, or you can set it to twenty-four, so. It goes back to. Taking the cash transaction and then transferring will be for credit card usage. Kiosk. Now, the, the pay.
Clear the rate structure in the lot isn't the dollar for two hours across the board, it's structured to be cheaper the longer you stay. And so it would stand to reason that it would be more expensive to purchase twenty or thirty minutes than it is just breaking down the two-hour rate. Because it's cheaper to then get five hours, cheaper to then get ten hours.
Totally got that, just that we have a number of shoppers that really don't want that. They don't have, they don't need to be there, they need to get in there, get out. What we. Down, down, and that, there it is.
No, I understand, I'm sorry, I was just speaking to the dollar amount. Sense to be the breakdown, it could actually probably be more than that because the shorter intervals become more expensive. Okay, uh, first, uh. We, I don't know if this is a good sign or not, twenty twenty-five, but we are at, uh, ten thirty. So as you know, our policy procedure is, I'm gonna tell you, we have to. Yeah, we have to, on I C, we have to take action on that, uh, it's essential. So in order for our policy, we have to continue the meeting, if there is a motion of a second majority, then we can continue the meeting. But I do want to say it is ten thirty, let us start to, to wind this part thing up, and let's kind of keep gravity and let staff get out. And, and, so anyway, um, oh, we can motion to extend the. Level three. I was gonna say eleven thirty, we don't have to go at eleven thirty. But just so you're all doing, let's try that, okay, uh, motion, uh. Uh, motion in second, you'll know later than eleven thirty, you'll always figure, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? That's fair. Sure, others too, too, um, okay, let's, uh, continue, what else is on the list? Okay, hey, let's go to that, uh, one item, uh, and that is. Updating the holiday schedule to reflect the recognized holidays. Motion in second to approve, all those papers say hi.
Alright.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously, five oh. Yes, and I'm saying, please interrupt, I apologize, I know I'm, 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 before we go to the next item. Um, I think we moved a lot of the ears tonight, which is fine, that's all good, um. I need to wrap my head, and I think the CFO needs to wrap his head around, what have we just, uh, not as criticism or what's the impact, right? And I think you are, you would want to know that as well. We really don't have the capacity to do this, but I'm gonna bring back the next council meeting, is the recommendation to hire somebody to help us. Figure out what we need to do here so that we're not caught by surprise when something really goes awry. With, with whatever may have happened, this, this analysis, you guys were, the text was, you're building a financial model on the diets. We're not sure you guys all understand exactly what you're doing, and I'm not sure if I understand what you're doing. So we wanted to be really clear about making sure we understand what, what this has done to the fiscal sustainability of the program. So at the next council meeting, I'll be bringing back the recommendation, bringing somebody to help us, to guide me to this, and I may. Even cheat the system and bring in one quarter of the lower layer debt in approval, so, um, anyway, just a heads up to you, because this. Got much more complicated, it did not get me screwed up. Thank you, I'm seeing, oh, and I, I'm. Thank you, Chief, and I say this is something you'll happy to.
Consider adoption.
They do not have them in the city I'll be working for, if they choose to deport them, I will not be handling that.
I'm seeing.
Consider adoption under resolution appointing the Susan E. Manhanger as interim police chief pursuant, pursuant to California Government Code. Section two one, two two, one H.
See if I'm. It's pretty strategic presentation. Just wanted to highlight the thing that the item for the council is a required of CalPERS, follow these findings, uh, what I will share is that. Uh, the agreement is included in the council packet, uh, the only thing I did want to just clarify is that, of course, the new chief with the new interim chief. Um, in addition to the compensation, uh, that that individual will be provided with all the tools and equipment necessary to do the job, and I just want to get that on the record. Thank you. Thank you, I know it says we're appointing, but it is the city manager that is appointing, and it's just, uh, how do you, we need to do, because of your retirement system. Is there any? Action, of any comment? Motion in second to approve, all those papers say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed, passes five oh. Uh, now we will move on to council committee report apps, are there any? Hey, let's move on to item ten, comments, ten councilors.
Basically, finding people of emergency preparedness committee meeting. Working fires already, and wanting people's minds and, and what's happening and what's San Bruno doing about it, one way to find out. Go to the emergency preparedness committee, which happens at the meeting Thursday, six thirty, City Hall. There will be a discussion, um, the fairness of our community, and Chief has been working on that, so. Really interested, direct sent to, to council scheme and learn how to improve the safety of your family and your community.
And, uh, I wanted to say, uh, just mention our chief, the chief delay. Fire department for their efforts and their service, and the work they've done for all the fire mitigation, and of course, uh, having our folks up there. Also, there is going to be, well, uh, there's going to be a fire hazard severity zone maps that will be coming out of the state. It's one of the state mandates that the cities and towns get to get, and then figure out after. With no money, so I, uh, thanks to the chief, uh, delay. We're trying to get a meeting together for community, there's, uh, Cal Fire, and happens office. Uh, and hosted for the other, uh, neighboring communities. Because this is something in a very short timeframe, once the map is out, we have like a hundred and twenty days in which that we have to take action and, and counsel. Uh, but I do want to thank. Everybody for that, uh, there's been question on the cleanup on the, uh, I three eight, it's scheduled for cleanup on the week of the twentieth. We had some emails about Seventh and Shaw, uh, that is something that is not, not good. That's cross the street too, long story short though, I have re-talked to the mayor of South San Francisco because there's, it's connected. Uh, I have emailed, contacted Caltrain, uh, today to let them know. Also, I have contacted Recology, uh, to the Canada Day, Recology is, uh, they'll be pick up the big items, uh, as you know. It gets picked up and just gets getting repushed, people, it's regular. So in essence, uh, Caltrain, uh, needs to do something, Recology and Caltrain can talk together about a service agreement. Or if that's a possibility, since we're, they're there more, uh, but again, we can't have our ratepayers paying. We're doing Caltrain work if Recology is not getting reimbursed because that ends up affecting the ratepayers. So I just wanted to, um, do that, and I have reached out, uh, to Canova, Spear, uh, Pappen and Becker. Uh, to ask for community meetings here in San Bruno with them, as they hosted before. They've all just gotten geared up, so we just need to give them a little bit of time. And I also want to thank the fire department again for back on the December, the, uh, December firefighters toy program. Which I think was about a hundred ninety-four families, three hundred plus, the, uh, young people that were children that were, uh, assisted. And that was due to many donations that came from this community and from others. So I want to thank everybody, wish everybody a happy year, and I'm sure, uh, city manager will appreciate it. When we can meet again, that we are. Um, so we'll turn this regular meeting to the next city council meeting, which will be held on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, at seven P M, meeting adjourned.